Good evening. If we can, why don't we go ahead and call the meeting to order? I know we've got a full house, and I don't know if there are any additional chairs that we could get for folks. Is there anyone maybe on staff who could try to round up another five or six more chairs? Whoever's standing, we're going to try to get your chairs. Just be patient for a couple of minutes, and hopefully we'll be able to find somewhere for you all to sit. But welcome to tonight's work session, the Falls Church City Council. We also have the Planning Commission here as well, and so we might do some joint business in a few moments. This is a work session, so the public generally will not be able to speak. You can listen, obviously, but in terms of actually making comments, this is not the appropriate time for that. But there will be other meetings that you can make comments. There'll be other venues and time and places where you can have your opinions heard. You're certainly welcome to contact any of us on council at any time with your opinions. We welcome them. But we do have a busy agenda. Why don't we go ahead and get started with our Mason Row presentation? Mr. Shields, do you want to start off with a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Charter, members of council, members of the Planning Commission. In discussing tonight's meeting with the Chair of the Planning Commission, Mr. Meeks, I think his intention was to participate in the developers' presentation and the staff presentations on the Mason Row project. And then immediately after that, the Planning Commission will go upstairs to have its continued hearing on the West Broad area plan and have further work on that item. And so the intent is, what the notice has been, is that at 8:30 is when the Planning Commission will be going upstairs to do that. Tonight's presentation, what we would propose as an order of business is to first hear from the developers so that the council and the Planning Commission, the public, can get a picture of what has changed in the application and hear that directly from the developer. And that would be followed second then by a presentation by Akita Ruzi, who's our Chief Planner on this project, on staff comments on the revised application. Mr. Goff, our Director of Economic Development, is here. He will provide a briefing to the council on the revised fiscal impact analysis. And then I'd like to just say a quick update on some of our discussions on voluntary concessions. So that was the order that we would propose for getting information to the council and to the public on the project, and then we'll answer any questions that the council has.
Great. Why don't we go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Batten? Welcome. Thanks for coming back to see us.
Yes, thank you. We're glad to be here, happy to be here, and appreciate being invited to come back and talk about the changes that have occurred on the Mason Row project. I'd like to first of all introduce -- where's my mic?
Yeah, press -- there you go.
Can everybody hear me? Okay. Okay. I just thought for a second I would introduce the folks on the spectrum side, the developer's side of this project. Dave Lasso, our land use attorney, is with us tonight. I'd like to introduce Sean Caldwell, who's a Managing Director with Mill Creek and is representing Mill Creek tonight. Sean also happens to be -- have grown up in Falls Church and went to elementary school and high school in Falls Church, City of Falls Church. I think he went to Saint --
Saint James.
Saint James. Good Catholic boy. I went to Catholic school myself. And then Dick Boskel, Senior Partner with Spectrum Development, and of course I'm Peter This project was referred to boards and commissions, as everybody knows, April 13th. Those meetings resulted in some suggestions and some requests, and the -- most of the boards and commissions deferred to give us some time to consider making some further changes to this project, expecting us to come back and discuss the revisions that we were able to make. We've had several meetings with staff and have gotten some additional suggestions from staff on design. We are currently working with staff on adjustments to -- some adjustments to the VCs. We have a retail plan and a market assessment for the retail project that has been prepared by Street Sense. We have also met with the city's consultant, Boland Smart, and have provided Eric Smart with our financial models so that he can analyze and make an assessment of the economics of this project. We have gone back and forth with Eric in addition to our first meeting with answers to questions that he's had on the financial models we provided. Going to the slides here now, I'm going to talk about the changes that have been made to Mason Row in response to suggestions from our meetings at the boards and commissions. We've had meetings with neighborhoods, and we've had some suggestions, as I said, from staff and even from city council. A number of good suggestions that we digested, and we spent considerable time really trying to focus on opening up the projects some more and following and responding to some of these comments and suggestions. So if we can go to the first slide. This is the ground floor site plan. What's in orange are retail buildings. There is a purple square at the front on West Broad Street, which is the hotel lobby. You see a theater lobby in blue facing West Street, and there is residential in yellow along Park Avenue and a residential lobby along Mason Avenue. What I want to point out is we've created a new pedestrian street which connects the Market Square with Northwest Street. It's about 30 feet wide, and that result -- that has resulted from separating the hotel building from the apartment building. We have removed the loading zone on Northwest Street across from the WNOD Trail, and we have consolidated that loading with a majority of the loading and trash for the project there on the eastern side of the project where it's marked "loading and trash." We created a turnaround area, and in that consolidation, loading, most all of the loading and the trash pickup will occur inside the project, and trucks will be coming to and from the loading area via West Broad Street. We've removed the retail building on Park Avenue and have replaced it with a three-story apartment townhouse-style building. We have removed the bypass internal road that was on the eastern side of the project, which enabled us to create the consolidation of the loading and zone -- loading and trash on the eastern side there as it's marked. We also were able to increase our retail square footage a little bit with that change. And we've added a left turn lane on West Broad Street, turning -- for cars that are turning into the project at the signalized intersection, allowing cars to go around those folks that are turning into the project. Next slide. This is representative of the upper floors of the project over top of the retail. What's in purple, the L-shaped building, is now where the hotel is. You can see that the hotel is separated from the apartment building, which is in the yellow We have also moved the hotel. As you all may recall, the hotel building was up across from the WNOD Trail on Northwest Street. We now have the hotel centered on the intersection of West Broad Street and Northwest Street. We have moved the parking garage there in the color -- in the gray color. The garage has been -- that's an above-ground parking garage, and it's been moved further back into the project from Park Avenue. And I believe it's been moved -- it's now about 47 to 50 feet from Park Avenue. In the past, I believe it was about 24 feet from Park Avenue. We've lowered the height of the building on Park Avenue. We now have a three-story apartment building as opposed to a retail building with a parking garage over the top. And we've increased the setbacks -- the stepbacks, excuse me, of the buildings that are on the Park Avenue side of the project. We've also, if you look at the top-left corner, we have changed the architecture and structure of the apartment building. We've created a residential plaza on West Street facing the WNOD Trail. It's colored there in green at the top. And we've turned the apartment buildings inside to the project so that -- to get away from a walled effect facing Northwest Street in that area. Next slide. This is a rendering. If you look in the left corner of this slide, you can see what the view is of. This is a view as if you were standing in the access to this -- to the Mason Avenue surface parking area and looking west towards Wells Fargo. What's in front of you is the Market Square Plaza with retail on the right side, retail on the left side, and retail in the foreground in the rear. You can also see that the separation of the hotel building, which is there in the tan-colored brick, and the apartment building, which is in the glass and the brick. We're facing directly at the new pedestrian street. That street is now open to the sky. It's 30 feet wide, and it is wide enough now to where we are planning to put retail along that street and activate on the edge there on West Street to activate Northwest Street with retail that will have direct access to the Market Square. And we're looking at boutiques and restaurants with outdoor seating along that pedestrian street. In front of this area is Market -- excuse me, is Mason Avenue. It's going from your left of the screen to the right of the screen, retail and shops on both sides of that street. West Broad Street is to your left, where the hotel is facing outward, and the WNOD Trail is at the end of Mason Avenue to your right. Next slide. This is the intersection of West Broad Street and Northwest Street. That is the hotel building with retail on the first floor at the corner, and retail goes on down West Broad Street. Retail goes up and around on Northwest Street. You can see to the left the pedestrian street where the separation of the buildings are on your left side there, the apartment building in a grayish-type color brick and glass, and then the tanned-brick-colored hotel. If you look down to the right of this image, you'll see a separation between the hotel and the other apartment building where Mason Avenue intersects with West Broad Street. And we've opened up the area of Mason -- where Mason Avenue and West Broad Street intersect so that there's visual contact with Market Square from the city's main downtown street. Next slide. This is a view on Park Avenue of the three-story townhouse-style apartments in the -- directly in front. And behind that apartment building is the beginnings of the parking garage, which is in the back with the -- with an architecture-style representative of what looks like the apartments. Windows in that parking garage with wall structures that prevent any views of cars or car headlights. Next slide. This is the intersection of Park Avenue and West Street. There are some gray posts that represent the new traffic signals we're proposing to do at this intersection. You see where the WNOD Trail is being rerouted, and so it can connect with a crossing that will be at the intersection. To your left, and that crossing will be in front of a stop bar, so the cars will have to stop at that traffic light in front of the trail. The Mason Avenue is directly in front with retail on both sides. The apartment building is above the retail in front of you. That building is five floors over one floor of retail, and I believe the height on that building is about 81 feet. We made the decision to not do what's called penthouse-style apartments on the top floor with arched ceilings, so we were able to get the building heights below the 85-foot height. We are also showing on the left side of your -- of the image here on the -- on Park Avenue adjacent to the project is a location that we are proposing for bike share. And you'll see -- and we've got retail facing the WNOD Trail, contemplating bike shops, some coffee shops, and what have you to address those folks that are coming to the project on the WNOD Trail or who are riding on the WOT Trail and passing through the city. Next slide. This is an image of where Mason Avenue intersects with West Broad Street. And so Mason Avenue is -- goes straight and ends at the intersection of Park Avenue and West Street at the end of that image and the WNOD Trail. There's retail on both sides, contemplating restaurants with outdoor seating and some boutique shops, gift shops, some retail services. This street will have two lanes for vehicles, and will have parallel parking on both sides. And we're doing that to create a vibrant urban street for this type of retail project. To your left is the hotel in the tan brick. The hotel lobby is there to your left, and we have a circle at the access point into Mason Avenue that provides areas for hotel guests to stop and to come into the lobby and transfer bags and what have you. Retail you can see on the right that's coming out of Mason Avenue and continuing down West Broad Street to the right, and then there's retail past the hotel lobby that's continuing westbound on West Broad Street. Hotel -- excuse me, apartment building to the back of this image and to the right side above the retail. Okay, next image. On the road improvements, we are -- we've reached an agreement with the Park Authority on a design for the trail to come down to the intersection, and so now we have that -- and that's depicted there in gray. It's a small lane depicted in gray that meets the crossing at Northwest Street at the intersection. Just to review what we're doing at this intersection, we're bringing Park Avenue -- we're providing some land in this project to bring Park Avenue south and West Street slightly south so that the two streets have a more traditional straight-in connection. So cars that are approaching these intersections from Park Avenue and West Street are facing each other in a traditional form. Mason Avenue is lining up with the northbound section of Northwest Street. We're adding turn lanes on both sides of Northwest Street so that cars that are making turns do not block cars that are trying to come through the intersection, go straight or to the right, which will help the flow of traffic at this intersection and the capacity for traffic at this intersection. And we believe the trail crossing design and the turn lanes are going to increase safety at this intersection considerably. You'll see to the left and to the right pedestrian crossings. Whoops. Pedestrian --
We're just trying to create --
Oh, okay. Okay. Got to work on my voice tone there, okay. Pedestrian crossing to the right and to the left there on -- well, the left is on West Street and the right is on Park Avenue to allow folks to come from the trail to the project safely and for folks who are leaving the project and want to go to the trail to do that safely. Next slide. We are still in discussions with the Park Authority and the city about the crossing of the trail on Grove Avenue, a design that's being considered and that's still in discussion is to turn the trail slightly south and to create a perpendicular crossing of Grove Avenue for the trail and to elevate the trail crossing Grove Avenue to increase the safety of folks that are crossing Grove Avenue and also to provide some traffic calming as cars approach the Grove Avenue and West Street intersection. Next slide. This is the intersection of West Street and West Broad Street. We are putting in a trash garage, a small trash garage to service the hotel there to the top right with a turn-in, and the hours of operations for this garage will be limited, restricted to off-peak times, and the trash will be -- the trash containers will be rolled out, and it's about a five-to-15-minute process for the trash to be collected, put back in. There'll be a decorative garage door, and that will be -- that will stay closed at all times. Also on Northwest Street to the approach of West Broad Street, we've created a turn lane so that folks that are going leftbound do not block folks that are trying to go through the intersection straight or to the right, which will increase the capacity of this intersection. We also have a left turn lane slightly above there at the top, allowing cars to turn into the Wells Fargo access and not block those folks that are trying to go through on West Street, onto Park Avenue, or on up Northwest Street. Next slide. And this is probably the most substantial new additional road improvement, and that is after talking with the city further and the folks at the CACT, we came up with a design to create a left turn lane into the project at the eastern signalized intersection. And you can see that new left turn lane kind of at the top. It says 110-foot queuing left turn lane. We provided some property on our project to make room for that left turn lane, which will allow a much more efficient flow of cars that are trying to continue straight on down West Broad Street and not have any blockage with 110-foot turn lane, to not have any blockage of those folks that are trying to continue on down West Broad Street. We also have a pedestrian crossing at the signal so that folks can cross West Broad Street from the south and access Mason Row safely at a signalized intersection and also folks that want to go to other commercial buildings or neighborhoods on the north side of West Broad Street. Next slide. Community benefits. Just a quick overview, we are still working with the city manager and staff on some adjustments to the VCs, as I said, but the main items that are going to be in the VCs that we're working on are cash contributions to the schools, the library, city park capital improvements, cash contributions to Catch and to Bike Share, funding for post-development traffic study, the affordable dwelling units. We've met with the Housing Commission and folks on the housing side, and the decision's been made to go away from a cash contribution and provide units on-site, and we are going to provide the 6% of all units will be affordable dwelling units. We are doing the NGBS, National Green Buildings Standards. Silver certification for the apartment building. We are also doing a LEED-certified building for the hotel or LEED-certified equivalent. We are also doing the undergrounding of the aerial utilities along West Street next to the WNOD Trail, and we're providing a new sidewalk along the north side of West Street. And I told you we keep it short, and so we'll open it up for questions and answers.
Thank you very much. Before we get to questions and answers, Mr. Shields, does staff have a presentation or report they'd like to present?
Mayor, we do, and Ms. Ruzi will give the staff report for the planning, and that will be a summary of all staff comments that we have to date. Staff review is ongoing, and we expect that the full comprehensive staff comments will be in this week.
I would just like to highlight two areas of the staff report. First of which is the pending issues that require further review by staff and ongoing discussions with the applicant. And the second area of the staff report is the improvements that were made to the project in the recent submission. For pending issues, one, we have the residential density that continues to be high with the proposed 340 rental apartment units. Number two, we have the ADUs that does not meet the city's affordable housing policy as proposed with the 60, 80, 100 percent area median income breakdown. Number three, the applicant has capped contributions for off-site improvements to $350,000 in their voluntary concessions, and that's subject to further staff evaluation. Number four, the proposed retail plan includes service uses that are considered less desirable retail uses and needs further refinement. Number five, the proposed voluntary concessions as a whole remain under discussion between the applicant and the city. Six is a TDM plan that was submitted with the recent submission. Will need further review and refinement and discussions with the applicant. Seven is the latest massing of the project has provided a notable relief from the previously perceived massing and fortress-like design. The staff would encourage that the applicant continue to explore additional design strategies to further reduce the building height. The second area of the staff report I'd like to highlight is the improvements that were made to the project. The project has improved in regards to massing, scale, and compatibility with the revised design that offers some relief from the overwhelmingly large presence. First of that improvement is the hotel that's moved to the corner of West Broad and Northwest away from the residential communities along Grove Avenue and Park Avenue. Second is the hotel building is now completely separated from the residential building, offering a physical and visual breaks along West Broad and Northwest. Third is the previously proposed massing above the Mason Lane entryway along Broad Street is now eliminated, leaving that section completely open. Four is the residential elevation that's approximately of 35 feet in height proposed along Park Avenue that will consist of rental apartments. The previously proposed retail is now eliminated there. Number five is the pedestrian access that's proposed on Northwest Street that leads directly into the Market Square, which also provides an opening there to the project. Number six is the parking garage is not really visible at human scale on Park Avenue anymore, and it's now effectively hidden behind the proposed residential elevation. Number seven is the notable stepbacks that are proposed along the Park Avenue that really helps to reduce the height along that section of the street. Other elements of positive impacts that are proposed are the bus stop, electric car-changing station, shuttle service for the proposed hotel, bike parking and storage, and the monetary contribution of the $15,000 towards the cost of installation of a Bike Share facility and an annual financial contribution of $9,000 for maintenance. And that concludes staff briefing.
Thank you very much. Do you also have a report from Economic Development Office?
I do, and if I could ask Mr. Goff to come, and we'll -- I'll switch seats with him. He can stay here.
Speaking of seats, are there any more seats we can round up? Because there's a lot of folks standing up around here.
We are at the maximum.
I think we need a bigger room.
Okay. I'm sorry to everyone who's standing up.
We're going to leave soon.
Okay.
Staff has updated the fiscal impact analysis to evaluate changes in the proposed project that are contained in the July application. We've also considered new information from the developer about the proposed size of the movie theater, as well as the developer's proposed commitments to at least 20,000 square feet of restaurant space and a potential restriction on the amount of service retail versus standard retail space in the project. All of these factors inform the fiscal impact -- All of these factors inform the fiscal impact result, and should they change, we'll adjust our analysis accordingly. That said, we estimate the gross tax revenue for Mason Row from all sources to fall in a range from 3.8 to $4 million per year. Again, this is gross annual revenue. Net revenue to the city each year is expected to range between $1,376,000 and $2,85,000. The extremes of this range are explained by differences in estimates for gross city expenses related to the project, the largest being public school costs driven by the number of projected new school or public school pupils in Mason Row. At one end of the range of estimates for new pupils, we've used a ratio of 0.32 for each of the 340 apartments. This represents the ratio of pupils living in mid-rise apartments across the city and gives us an estimate of 109 pupils for Mason Row. This ratio doesn't differentiate the current pupil population in those mid-rise apartments by residential unit bedroom count and does not apply those ratios to proposed apartments in Mason Row that have the same bedroom count categories. To this total, we have now added a maximum of eight additional pupils who may reside in the proposed extended-stay hotel during the school year. This is based on experience in the last year with State Department families living at the Marriott in Falls Church. So using this combination of pupil count produces the highest expected, projected expenses in our modeling scenarios and the lowest net fiscal impact of $1,376,000 a year. At the other end of the range, we looked at pupil ratios in mixed-use projects in the city that have apartments. Those are Pearson Square, the Reed Building, and Northgate. At the Economic Development Committee's request, we drilled down to determine the ratios of pupils by bedroom count in these buildings for the same apartment types that are proposed in Mason Row: studios, one-bedroom units, one-bedroom units with dens, and two-bedroom units. There are no two-bedroom units with dens or three-bedroom apartments proposed for Mason Row. The result in this scenario is lower overall annual expenses for the city due to fewer estimated pupils, a total of 55. To this, we've added a minimum of four pupils who may reside in the extended-stay hotel. Again, we base this on last year's Marriott experience, but we also looked back a longer period of time to years when fewer or no pupils resided there. The projected net fiscal impact in this end of the range again is a high of $2,85,000 a year. In terms of what we call the net-net annual fiscal impact of the project, or the difference between what the development site currently produces in net tax revenue versus what our range of scenarios says are likely to produce, that range is a net-net fiscal impact between $1,186,000 and $1,894,000 per year. If we compare Mason Row net fiscal impact projections with previously approved special exception projects, it would track very closely with estimates for the Rushmark-Harris Teeter and the Lincoln at Tanner Hill projects. On a per-acre basis, Mason Row is expected to yield about $320,000 to $485,000 per acre per year net annual revenue and about $276,000 to $441,000 per acre net-net annual revenue. One final note is that in the course of our analysis, we note that the proposed Mason Row development program contains about 183,000 square feet of commercial space on 187,000 square feet of land for a commercial floor area ratio of very close to 1.0. In other words, if all of the commercial space proposed for Mason Row was built on one floor, it would cover 98% of the 4.3 acres. Today, there are about 40,000 square feet of commercial buildings on these properties for a commercial floor area ratio of 0.21. In other words, collectively, the existing buildings cover about 20% of the 4.3 acres. And by way of comparison, the commercial FAR for Kaiser Permanente's Falls Church Campus is 0.76, which is 112,000 square feet of building on 147,000 square feet of land. And the commercial FAR for George Mason Square is 0.78, 91,000 square feet of buildings on 117,000 square feet of land. That concludes our fiscal impact analysis for the Mason Row project and a quick perspective on the volume of commercial space proposed on the development site.
Thank you very much. Is there any further staff report, Mr. Shields?
That's the end of the staff report, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. And if you have questions on fiscal impact, maybe we could do that while Rick is still here, if you like.
Okay. What to, why don't we go on? Our Planning Commission friends, I guess they're going to be heading upstairs fairly soon. Would you all like to ask questions or make any comments, Mr. Meeks?
If you do, I have a wireless.
Do you have questions?
Sure.
Yes, Andy, you guys can.
Okay. Or comments?
I just have one question. I noted that the staff report said that the residential density was still high. I'm curious what residential density the staff is looking for. Like, at what density would they say it's not too high?
Jim, do you want to?
Well, thanks, I think.
Okay.
Some of this is a reaction to comments we've heard from council and also Planning Commission. And so when you look at the project and you look at the amount of space that is taken up by the buildings, you know, you're kind of at the limit of what can be done in that zone. And so there's not a lot of extra space to add more density. So you're at the high end as opposed to the low end or the medium end. Part of it is an economic development issue as well, and I think, Rick, you have some, we've gotten some feedback in terms of the interplay between the economic feasibility of the various uses, the hotel, which the council has been interested in, and also the movie theaters.
Well, we've asked our consultant to take a look at two questions that council posed. One has to do with whether or not the 340 residential units are justified in terms of supporting the commercial components of the project. The other question had to do with subsidy for the movie theater and at what amount. We are still working with our consultant who considers this an extremely complex project to analyze. He's yet to file a final report. I have had several conversations. Clearly, though, there are risk factors in this project involving a movie theater and subsidy for that and a hotel, which, you know, contribute to the need for an offset in more stable elements of a project, which is the residential component. Whether or not 340 units is the magic number, we're still waiting to hear from our consultant on that.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned the post-development revenue to the city. What is the pre-development of those revenue coming to the city from those four acres? And what do those numbers include when you state them?
The gross revenue for the uses on the site now include everything the city receives in taxes, personal property, real estate, taxes, sales, meals, the whole range. And it's 398,000 gross revenue and 190,000 in net revenue.
Okay, thank you very much for saying what it includes.
I'm interested in the discussions that have been going on with the Regional Park Authority and the changes to the trail. Is that something that the developer is proposing to do, make the changes to the trail, or are we counting on the Regional Park Authority to do that?
Would you like me to answer that question?
Yes.
We've had several meetings with the park authority since we've met with the Planning Commission and have come up with a design for the realignment of the trail that they're satisfied with. And the park authority does not have a budget to do the job, so the developer is agreed and is committed to funding the realignment of the trail.
I'm just curious, does that mean that that funding comes out of that 350 cap?
We've gone away from the cap. I probably should have said that earlier. We've made the decision not to cap the road improvements and the off-site improvements of which the trail is involved. So we think the road improvements from our dialogue with Public Works and staff are really valuable and important and can't create a situation where there's vagueness for the city, and so it just made sense to get away from the cap. So we're going to fund the off-site improvements that we are presenting, including the trail improvements.
That's good to hear. I really think the ability of the trail and the pedestrians to interact with that property will make a big difference. One, you know, I did have one question while I was sitting here thinking about it. What do these two-bedroom apartments look like? When we went in and looked at Northgate after it was built, a lot of the two bedrooms were set up so that each bedroom had a full bath, which meant that they had a lot of young professionals coming in that were sharing those two bedrooms. And as you know, we have a demographic gap and that we don't have the 20 to 35-year-olds we should have here. And so from a planning perspective, we'd really like to fill that gap some. So what do these two bedrooms look like?
You want me to round out any of them? I don't want. I'll let our partner, Mill Creek Shaw, answer that question for you.
I think as you described them, the, our classic two-bedroom is around 1,100 square feet. They will have obviously two bedrooms, both walk-in closets and bathrooms for each. They're not necessarily, in our experience, they're oftentimes roommates. You do get young professionals who live there. You do get sometimes couples with young children. And in some instances, they're, you know, we have the singles, the mingles, and the jingles. The jingles are obviously, you know, the slightly older demographic that likes the bedroom for kids coming back. But does that help the description?
No, that does help because I really thought that one of the things we were really concerned about with Northgate is because we were hoping, being near the metro, that it would be designed to bring in some young professionals, and we're also hoping that this one, being near the bike trail, would also do that. So, and according to the manager at the Northgate, that was a big function with having those, a full bathroom and a full walk-in closet for both bedrooms.
And if I could offer this, we are the developer at the Mosaic District, so if you'd ever like to see what these homes look like, feel free to visit, and we're happy to show.
Okay, great.
Does the Planning Commission have any more questions or comments? Okay, why don't we go ahead and turn?
Yeah, I'm sorry, one in the corner.
Okay, Russ?
I just have a quick question about the level of service on West Broad Street intersection that you're proposing. The question is, what's the level of service?
With the road improvements that we are proposing, the level of service is maintained its current level. If you consider the future traffic increases from growth from Tyson's Corner and the City of Falls Church and this project, and actually, I believe it's at the PM hour, the level of service of this intersection is improved. And I believe the PM hour is level D, and I believe the other times of day are level E, I believe is what it is. But I can look that up and give you an exact answer.
Do you know what this level of service is currently? It's currently?
I believe it's E.
It's currently E?
Correct.
It will go to D?
It will go, it'll improve to D at one time of the day, the peak evening hour.
And the other intersections that, around Grove and on West Street further up, have those improved since your last submission, or those remaining, I believe at D, as we thought they were?
Those, Grove Avenue, I believe, has maintained its level of service as it is today with the calculation of the future into the next decade and this project. The road improvements enable that intersection to be, to maintain its current level of service. And I can't remember right off the top of my head what the level, what the letter is, but I can get you that answer. I want to say that it's a level D, I believe, which are all standard acceptable levels of service in an urban environment. Park Avenue and West Street is where the biggest improvement is. I believe they go to level C, and at certain times of the morning and evening, it's a level D. It all, so it comes up a whole level to level C.
Are there any other questions or comments, the Planning Commission?
Well, I probably should let you know the new intersection that we're creating at Mason Avenue on the east side is going to be a level of service B with the turn lane and with the traffic signal. Just remind everybody that there are 11 access points here. Part of the capacity of the road system is handling so many access points in this block. We're going to go from 11 access points to three access points, which is also helping the capacity of the roads. The extra lanes being provided on West Street and the reduction of access points goes a long ways to increasing the ability for traffic to flow on the street. Also, the control of the new traffic signals creates separation, what we call gaps, in the traffic flow at peak hours so that people can get onto the street, which you don't really have that today. There's only two lanes for West Street. There's no turn lanes, and there's no traffic control.
Okay, great. Why don't we go on to council comments? Anyone want to start at their end of the other? Oliver, do you want to start? All right, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Just to speak to the proximity to metro and the relationship, comparison to Northgate, the size units at Northgate compared to the size units that you're contemplating here just average, is it fair to say the Northgate units and the units that'd be here would be approximately the same?
Approximately the same unit mix and same size.
Okay, so we know based on our experience at Northgate that, which has been open and is now more than 90% occupied, that we have about 20 kids in a building of 94 units. So the estimates that Rick read off there, that would be about a 2.2 ratio. So the estimates of the kid count, if it replicates the Northgate experience, would be on the, Rick, am I right here, on the range of 55 to 109, it would be closer to 55 than 109 if the Northgate experience trued out here. Is that right?
Yeah, I think that would be in the 60 to 70 range.
Okay, all right, so on the low end of that range. The distance, I know the distance from Mason Road to the West Falls Church is about 15 minutes, since that's just down the street from where I live. What's the walking distance from Northgate to East Falls Church? Does anybody know? I've never actually made that walk. Is it? Okay, so Northgate is somewhat closer to East Falls Church, six or seven minutes, really? Karen? I'm not feeling that.
I'm not. I want to say 10 or 15.
Yeah, okay, that's, we'll all go out with our clocks and time it tomorrow. The discussions with the consultant that Rick referred to and that you, Peter, referred The discussions with a consultant that Rick referred to and that you, Peter, referred to, that's the same one, right? This is Eric Smart, who is going to crunch the numbers and answer some questions, chief among them, do we really need to give you 340 apartments in order to make the financials of the project work? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and we just haven't heard from him yet, but we will.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks very much. Thank you to the developers. I especially want to thank the citizens that are here this evening. And as the mayor said earlier on, this is part of a process in which you'll have lots of opportunities to react to what you've seen, to react to the questions that we have. So we're going to make sure that that happens before any kind of final vote on this. A couple of questions. What is the percentage of the square footage that's residential versus commercial?
I think the commercial square footage is 30%. I think it's 32. 32, okay. And so therefore the residential is about 68%.
So in the big picture, this is largely a residential development with some commercial on the first floor and some additional amenities built in. So I think it's important to understand what this is. This is primarily a multifamily residential dense project with some commercial on the first floor and some additions and some work transportation-wise and in terms of the addition of the movie theater. And I think the question the community rightly needs to ask is whether we really need more residential units or whether we really need a greater contribution of commercial to our, to our tax base. So I think that's the fundamental question. When you remove all the pretty pictures, what is this project fundamentally? The second point is it's dense, and for those who live nearby, it's shockingly dense. It continues to be that, and I understand that. Where I live, I live across the street from about a four or five-story building, but I understand when you are not used to that, that this has a certain degree of shock that is, that is difficult to deal with in some ways. So that would be the second point. I very much understand the reaction, legitimate reaction we get from folks. And I also understand the support from some folks who tend to focus on, look at the wonderful commercial we're getting, ignoring for the time being all the residential with all the potential costs that we're getting, school costs and otherwise. So I kind of understand where people are from various standpoints. The next point I'd make is I really would like a second consultant review of this. The consultants we've used, I think we've used it for more than a decade. I think it's time to have a change. I think the consultants we've used have tended rubber stamp every major so-called mixed-use, largely residential projects. And so I'm going to ask for a second opinion in terms of the consultants because we get the consistent support for this same development model, time in and time out, which is partly why we've accepted it. The other point is I think we need to sharpen our pencils on the fiscal outcome. I think it assumes full occupancy and certain things that we've not frankly been promised about the restaurant. We don't know whether, we just know that there's restaurant space. We don't know when or how or if a restaurant will actually be opening there. The retail space, it's unclear what kind of retail it's going to be. So I have to question any assumptions with regard to significant commercial revenue based upon what we know about this project, at least so far. I think the staff report has done a pretty good job, particularly the questions that they've raised about questions that I'll continue to raise, and I think the neighborhood will, and frankly, the entire city will rightly raise as we work through this project to determine whether it's really in the public interest or not. Let's see. Finally, in terms of process going forward, I support going back to first reading, and I do it for two reasons. First of all, I think there have been some significant changes, and I think it was appropriate to do that. That doesn't mean that we buy indefinite amounts of time or that we postpone a decision inappropriately. I believe first reading is a good idea because I think it tends to maximize our negotiating capability in a project which has some positive developments, for sure. But it, going to first reading tends to improve our negotiating authority. And for those who support the project, because as it seems to me, there's a high likelihood, considering the opposition to this project, that litigation might ensue, one element of that litigation might be, we went to second reading when we should really have gone to first reading. So I think regardless of what your perspective is on this project, that going back to first reading is something that I would prefer and support. So, but let me, let me sort of end with some positive things. I do appreciate that the developer has worked to improve sort of some of the elements of the appearance from the outside. I think they've worked hard to figure out what to do with the trail and how to manage traffic around it. I think we have some more, clearly some more work to do on it. And there are other elements of it where I think you've worked to try to make a very dense project at least look a little less dense than it originally did. That said, I continue to have some skepticism about the various components of the project that I've indicated, and I look forward to getting input from the community. I've read each and every emails that have come in. I appreciate the work that everyone has put in on this project. I think in some ways we've made some progress, in other ways it still is what it has always been, which is a multifamily residential project with some commercial. And I'm concerned about the, whether that's something we really need, and I'm concerned about the net revenue generation, concerned about the lack of certainty about whether we're really going to get even the promised residential, the promised commercial tax revenues that we've been talking about. So I look forward to continuing to work on this project. I know the developers put a significant amount of time in it. Oh, one other point, the residential along Park that's been added, not only, of course, does that add the potential for increased city-related costs for public services, but it seems to me a disappointing use of what could potentially be very attractive, community-based commercial uses of some, of some kind. So again, thank you very much, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Mr. Z, I skipped over you. Did you have anything you wanted to say?
Well, I do have plenty to say, but yeah, I might as well get out now. So, you know, this project has been in the works for quite a while. And let me just begin first by asking some questions here that I know that the developer has taken great pains to meet with, not only the city government and the officials and the boards of commissions on numerous occasions, but has also met with the, with the community. So before I get into my other set of questions I'd like to be able to ask, have you met with the citizens on Grove and Park and showed them the latest changes which reflect their comments, and what do they think about that?
We've, we have finished up some recent meetings with the neighbors on Park Avenue and the neighbors on Grove Avenue and the streets that are directly connected with Grove Avenue. And we went through all of the changes with them and actually walked through the submittal that is on the city's website. And we spent quite a bit of time showing them the plans and the changes and also answering questions. And we were, we thought that the meetings went well.
Well, we've come a long ways with regard to the architecture and the massing and the front that it presents to the neighborhood. For example, the, the two single-family houses that were originally contemplated for Park have now been, gone through lots of permutations. At one point, commercial facing the neighborhood, that's gone away. And so we're back to a residential front. You've moved the parking structure back so that we don't have the opportunity to have headlights shining to the neighborhood. I would also observe that you have, in response to all the many comments from city officials, some of whom are sitting around this table here, that upon their insistence that, you know, you have a second anchor, you've spent the bulk of last year bringing in a movie theater, which is, as I recall, my colleague, Dave Snyder, who is, has been trying to get a movie theater started in the city for the last quarter century with no success. And now here we have seven. Also, if he had bothered to do his homework, you would notice that you've increased the commercial to residential from 28% to 71, to the current 34 to 66. So I think that's applicable. If you look at the FAR, I think you've done great strides and it's arguably a very large site. So to hear the planning director say it's too dense in response to what he's heard from council, I think you haven't heard from all of us. And I think that, you know, if we want density, we can choose not to put it here. We can tell these guys to go away. But we're looking at next year. If we don't get this project built, we don't attract some of the 43,000 cars moving down the street that don't stop, we're going to get I-66 toll-gated, that'll put more of that traffic on the roads. And if we don't draw that, some of that traffic here, have them spend their money in the city, that just means this cherished quaint little city, people sit around this table, may not be me, they're going to have to face the prospect of increasing your taxes 6, 10, 15 cents on their dollar. And I think that's a lot worse than getting a nice development built on the site. I've got more, but I'll stop at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baruch?
Thank you. So I wanted to kind of limit some of my comments, but I'll echo some of the comments made earlier by Vice Mayor Snyder. I think he hit on some of the points that I had. But I did want to highlight a few. I think as, I'm sorry, I think as far as some of the improvements that have been made to the massing, I think Dan Z makes a good point of, especially one of my concerns was how the parking lot was being laid out. I think this is where I would have liked to have seen it months ago. So, you know, I think some of the onus, and this will get into some of the process issues, that's where it should have started. Part of my frustration is, of course, you're going to get a very negative reaction when you have that type of parking lot with that type of massing sort of facing Park. You're going to get pushback. And then we spend time saying, well, can't we put retail there? Can't we put more residential there to kind of screen it? And here we are. So, and that, that happened a while ago. It should come as no surprise, and I'm sure those were some, some initial feedback even before we saw, saw it publicly that staff had. So I say, good work on that, but that should have happened months ago to be further along to where we're at now. But some of the concerns that I continue to have, you know, I think the Planning Commission raised a good point, well, what is the right residential mix, et cetera? So I think there's two points. One is feasibility that we're asking our consultants to look at and possibly two. But that's like one data point for me. You know, it's whatever the input is, is what's going to be the output. Unfortunately, the city doesn't have great input that's coming from the developers. So I think there's always going to be a question mark irregardless of who is assessing that, even if it's a third party. So I'm not concerned about the feasibility. I'm sure ultimately this is going to be a project that's workable for the developer. That's not where I come at it. But I come at it of, is it feasible for the community? And along the same lines, I know that the question that was asked is, well, what number of units would make this a workable project for the developer? I think that's completely backwards of how the city should be looking at it. I'm not interested in whether it's a feasible project for the developer. I mean, that's really up to the developer. It gives us just one factoid, which I'm interested in, but I'm much more interested in, is what is our absorption capacity given the various projects and zoning throughout the city? I've asked this probably going on two years now, and we simply have not gotten sort of that estimate coming forward. And now we're seeing multiple, multiple development projects which are likely to have a residential component to it, in addition to a big planning opportunity coming up, which was part of the water deal, which I was, you know, very fortunate and honored to be a part of. So I think we need to look at it holistically of how many units can the city absorb? What does it mean for the ultimate tax rate? Where are we with school expansions and how does it all fit together? So I don't think this rides on this project alone, but it needs to be looked at in a much more collective way, and we're not doing that. And frankly, I am very leery of supporting any more projects that are essentially residential with commercial on it unless there's some sureties on the commercial. So I'm glad that we have not one, but two hotel, or two anchors, glad that there's a hotel at this and a theater. But I was very clear in my statements earlier, which unfortunately didn't get put into a motion, and I thought that was premature, to ensure that we had sureties, whether they be performance bonds, specific performance bonds, something that would get us the retail structure. And they are not there. They're standard VCs that we did before, I believe. The manager told me that they're similar to what we did with Harris Teeter, which I was clear on are not good enough. And while we're on the VCs, from what I understand, some of the fiscal impacts on the VCs has already slid back through various submissions, which I'm not interested in getting into tonight. But if we are going to say what tips this is on the commercial, and that's why the developer is going to get any residential, those commercial components have to be absolutely solid. And let me be crystal clear, the VCs are not there now at all. And this is months into works. And I think we all want to see the commercial development, but in, I mean, there are no free lunches, not for us and not for the developer. And given sort of where we're at with the amount of residential that we're taking up, I'm not at the point, there's one council member that's going to sort of take undue risk. And I think with the VCs that they're drafted the way that they are, without the developer or the business community or the partners stepping up saying, we believe in this project and here's a surety bond, et cetera, I'm sort of not interested in much more until we get that sort of fundamental piece anchored down, if you will. And I'm very glad that we are seeing two commercial components. I think that could be very exciting. But unless we have more about how that's exactly going to plan out rather than sort of a retail plan, and let me also be clear, I know that the VCs have some, well, this is how much is being allocated to X type of use such as residential, et cetera, and we're going to define, or I'm sorry, business use and how that's going to be defined. And I believe probably Vice Mayor Snyder knows this the best. Certainly I've had my fill of it as well, of developers coming in several years after the fact and possibly with numerous changes of ownership and wanting changes to that to allow for different usage. I'm not interested in that. That can happen. We certainly don't want the vacant space, et cetera. And that's why I'm insisting on something more than, than what's being laid out in the voluntary concessions. So those are some of my highlights. And on the process issue, I'll say, you know, I think at minimum this needs to go back to first reading. I'm not in any way prepared to say tonight it's going to move forward. I think there's some fundamentals missing if that's one of the process questions that staff is looking at. So this is my two cents right now.
Thank you. Ms. Connolly?
Thank you. I have about five different sets of questions for you, some for staff and some for the developer, so you guys can have a chance to talk and answer some of these questions. The first is, a lot of questions that have come from community members that I've read are about the traffic and the congestion. So yesterday I took it upon myself to read the whole traffic impact study as much as I could with all those numbers. And my question is this, the traffic study was done in September 2013. We're now in September 2015. The study on Oak, Oak and Broad was a different study. That was done in November 2010 before the Hilton Garden Inn was added. So I'm just wondering, how has traffic changed in those two or five years? And is that, how is that going to be incorporated into what you're doing? Does that matter? I think it matters.
Well, I think that, to answer your question, I think, first of all, the, the forecast for the future from the developments that are planned.
Right.
And so they've, in that traffic study, that includes the Rushmark development, the, the assisted living development, all of the developments that are planned are in this study. The study also includes, and this was all recently updated, also includes a study of the growth that's happening in Tyson's Corner.
Right.
And on the other side of Falls Church, on the Seven Corners side. And those analyses were also updated for this submission. This sub- Um, this submission, traffic study submission, was also updated for, um, the theater and the, uh, changes in the square footage for the retail on this project as well. So there's been a lot of updates to the traffic study, uh, that are incorporated in that whole analysis.
I guess I would be curious, and I wonder if staff can answer this question, because these are forecasts from August twenty-ten or November twenty-ten of what's going to happen at Oak and Broad. Now we're five years later. Can we see if those forecasts match up with the reality? Do they?
I'm looking around for, um, Mr. Collins. Okay. So if we could get back to that question when Mr. Collins is here.
Okay. Um, another thing here on page five of the traffic study, the consultant recommends that the western site access point along West Broad Street should operate as a right-in, right-out only. But I'm assuming with the light that you just described, that is not going to happen.
Okay. What he's talking about is the second, um, access point into the project, which is in between, uh, west, where West Street and West Broad Street intersect. And if you come to the other end of the project, there is a signalized access point there. In between that is Mason Avenue.
Right.
And so the recommendation is for Mason Avenue to be right-in, right-out. And that's because.
Okay.
If you come, go back to the traffic.
There you go.
So the traffic light is further down.
Correct.
And that's going to have, okay.
And that's because you've got a turn lane for traffic that is, um, turning left onto Southwest Street at the intersection. So you, you've got to provide some, sufficient queuing for that.
Right. Okay. So as we've been talking about the, uh, project at our high school, there's concern about, will VDOT approve a light on Broad Street? Does VDOT need to approve this light as well, the proposed light?
Well, the traffic light on West Broad Street meets the standards and requirements for VDOT.
Okay.
Uh, there's, we did a warrant analysis and it, it would be warranted under the guidelines of VDOT.
But it's still, but VDOT does have to approve it? Will have to go through that step?
I think it's.
I believe so.
I believe it's advisory from VDOT, but I could be mistaken. Dave?
They'll approve.
They will approve the light.
Or they'll have to review.
They'll have to review and approve it.
They'll have to review the traffic light. That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I see Mr. Collins here.
We were just discussing it. I, what I think we probably need to do is, is get back with you on that question in terms of the impacts of, uh, the Hilton Garden Inn and other projects as it relates to the impact studies on Mason Row and, and just comment as to whether we think the data as it is right now, the, the traffic studies capture that adequately or whether there's anything missing on that.
Okay. I would appreciate that because I think that's really important. Um, one of the things I noticed in the traffic study is that the predictions are that the intersections that are now Ds, if nothing happens at this site with regional growth and other developments in the city are going to fall to Es and Fs.
That's correct.
And what.
That's correct.
So what your traffic study is saying is that if Mason Row is approved with the intersections that you're adding and the change in access, that that intersection will remain a D and in some cases become a C or a B.
That's, that's correct.
But that does incorporate regional traffic, because a lot of the traffic that comes through that area is not our local traffic. People going from Arlington to Fairfax and.
You, you are correct.
Okay.
That, part of the analysis in the study is analyzing traffic from the growth in the region and the new projects that are in City Falls Church and the new projects that are planned for the City Falls Church. And in addition to that, uh, Mason Row being in place. That's correct. And the results to the intersections and the roadways of that study reflect those, um, projects and that growth.
Okay. And then one of your proposals, and one of these was a shuttle from the hotel to West Falls Church Metro.
That's correct.
Is there also a shuttle from the apartment to West Falls Church Metro?
We are contemplating doing a shuttle from the apartment building to, um, the, the metro stations. We've also been in dialogue with other developers in the area, and there's been some discussion about a privately operated shuttle between the mixed-use projects, going from the mixed-use projects to the metro and back and forth and, and creating some connectivity.
Okay.
And we are willing to, uh, support that and participate in that.
And that shuttle would not go on Grove Avenue, correct?
Um, as far as the Grove Avenue neighbors have made it clear to us, they would not be going down.
Okay.
Grove Avenue. Grove and Avenue is, um, is, uh, is a narrower street and, uh, it's, um, it's, it's pretty tight in there. Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's my traffic set. Uh, with the voluntary concessions, uh, Mr. Shields, I think, mentioned that the, your, the contributions to the school capital program as well as the affordable dwelling units aren't at the standard that we have expected from other developments in Falls Church. And I'm not exactly clear what that standard is, but I'm sure that Mr. Goff or Mr. Shields knows that. The amount of school capital costs that are provided by our other mixed-use developments. And I'd really like to see this development have that same standard.
The, um, if you take prior approvals, for instance, the Lincoln Project or the Harris Teeter Project, standard at that time was a per-unit contribution. And for apartments, that per-unit contribution was, for those two projects, seven thousand five hundred and eleven dollars per unit.
Okay.
And then we would exclude the affordable units from that, uh, from that calculation.
Right.
And that, uh, that figure is based on an analysis of our capital program in recent years with the schools. And then you divide that by the, basically the cost per seat. And then you apply that to a, an apartment type of use. Um, and so the, with the, uh, move to a, a standard template for the voluntary concessions, we did suggest the developers move to a per-square-foot charge.
Okay.
As opposed to a per-unit charge. Um, uh, the, the per-square-foot, um, offer by Spectrum at this point is below what, if you convert it back to that, uh, the old way we've done it.
Right.
It's, it's, um, below that level. Um, and so we will continue to, to discuss that with the developer, and, and I think they've acknowledged that this is an open point of discussion going forward.
Okay.
The, um, the developer has noted that, uh, for the first time, this development is making a contribution to library capital costs. And so one way I think for the city to look at it is there's a basket of community benefits. And, um, and I think the council ultimately is the decider as to how you'd like that basket to, to look and, and would you, um, if the basket can only be a certain size, would you want to allocate certain things to certain different uses? We think that's a reasonable discussion to have, but in our discussions, we have advocated for keeping the standards that, that we've achieved in the past.
Okay. Uh, and the same with the affordable dwelling unit question. I, you're saying six percent for affordable dwelling units, but from what I could read and what I can understand from what I read, um, you're looking at eighty and a hundred percent of AMI, not the fifty to sixty percent of AMI that we've asked other developments to provide. And I think that the affordable dwelling unit policy is really important in Falls Church. As our, all of our housing costs go up, we want to make sure that there's space for our teachers and our city employees to have a place to live. So I, that is one that I really don't want to skimp on, and it needs to be in compliance with the, what the policy is.
And we had a conversation with Julio and the Housing Commission.
Right.
And folks about that very issue, and, uh, we're looking at making some changes there.
Okay. Um, the movie theater, which everyone seems to like, I still don't understand how that's going to work from a tax, uh, perspective or from a city revenue perspective or what's the subsidy? I don't know if that's fully been worked out or not, but I need to understand that before I can make a decision on this project because it seems kind of squishy. And I guess that's because it's ongoing, but it would be nice to get some solid answers on the movie theater.
Would you like me to?
Yes. If you have any, yeah.
Um, the subsidy you're referring to is, is isolated or limited to, uh, the admissions tax. And the city has a admissions tax for, uh, theaters. Um, and we're discussing with the city about that admissions tax and about utilizing that admissions tax to subsidize, to help with the cost of the theater. Theater is a very, very expensive, uh, use. Uh, one of the most expensive uses you can build because of the nature of the, of the soundproofing and all the things that have to go into a theater. So that's, that's the, um, the scope and the, and the limitation of the subsidy. There's nothing else contemplated.
So when is that going to be built into what we're going to know when we vote on this project?
It's, uh, it's built in the models today, and your consultant and the, and Rick and the economic folks, uh, have all of that information.
So that just makes me wonder, is that really the best second anchor in this project? I hate to do that too, after all this work. But is it really the best second anchor?
For who?
For anyone, for the city? Is it going to bring in the revenue for the city that we need? Is it going to provide the placemaking that we want in this place? And you just said it's expensive for you to operate. Is it good for you?
Well, expensive to build.
Expensive to build.
And we're not the operators.
Okay.
The, uh, the theater itself.
The amusement tax has little to do with the benefits of the community.
Right.
Currently, the city has an ordinance to tax, uh, movie theaters at two percent of their ticket price. Uh, the proposal is to increase that, uh, to someplace between eight and ten percent. That, that particular dollar number is coming from the theater patron when he pays the ticket.
Right.
He's going to pay an extra eight to ten percent to his ticket. The subsidy is, the city will agree, much like the BGA wholesale deal, that, that we'll enter an agreement through the EDA that part of that, and that hasn't been decided yet, would come back so that this theater can be built at, at what's called a lost leader. It has nothing to do with the success of the theater, whether it will draw sense of place. The revenues from the theater still go to the city. Sales tax, meals tax on beverage, real estate taxes on the, on the building itself, and a sense of place that the theater will sell in screens is a different analysis from the amusement tax. Will it bring better retailers into the project? Will it bring people into the project? That's really the analysis. They're entirely separate from the standpoint, and they shouldn't be mixed.
Right. Okay. All right. Uh, and my last question is just something that Mr. Goff said, that, he said that this project is really complex and the consultant is taking his time to look at all the different pieces. And that's one of the things that keeps popping up as I look at things, is this is really complex. And I, as a city council member, have never looked at anything this complex before. And I'm just wondering if you, as developers, have ever built anything this complex before?
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
So, um, the answer is yes. This is complex, without a doubt, and I appreciate that it's overwhelming to absorb it. Um, our experience is we've developed about eight thousand, eight thousand homes in the DC region, all of this similar dynamic of mixed use. Uh, the one that was even more complex is we redeveloped the Dunloring Metro Station.
Mm-huh.
So that was a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of retail, so a little larger, six hundred and twenty-eight homes. And we had the pleasure of building Womata, two thousand car garage, which was a lot of fun.
Mm-huh.
But it's, yes, this is complex, but this is what our company does, and, uh, we're comfortable with it.
Okay. Uh, one more question about the penthouses, which I was reading about. And then you mentioned that you're not going to do the penthouse option because it said penthouses could be twenty feet higher than the eighty-five foot bonus. You're not going to do that?
Well, I'm not sure exactly how much higher they would, would be or how close they'd be to eighty-five.
In the papers, it says there could, they could be twenty feet higher.
Right.
We're not going to do any penthouses.
No.
So it will max out at eighty-one feet?
It's, it's around eighty-one feet, I believe. That's correct.
Okay. That's all for me. Thank you very much.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Well, I think my colleagues have asked some really great questions about the project itself. I have three process questions. The first one is for Mr. Goff. It has to do with the fiscal impact model. The only thing that changes in this model, based on your assumption about the number of kids, is the revenues that we'll get from the state and federal and the costs of operating the schools. There's no other impact on any of these other areas. We're not going to have higher library costs or parks and recs costs if we have more kids. We're not going to have higher police costs if we have more young professionals. There's nothing else that shifts in our current model.
Um, I would ask Becky Witzman to join me for a second and, um, help me with a response to that question.
Are you asking if the additional pupils are generating additional expenses with regards?
The assumption that changed in the model was the number of pupils.
Right.
The only things that changed, the two items on the revenue side were related to funding sources, federal and state, and the change on the operating side was only related to the schools.
Right.
So I just asked, are there no other impacts of having more pupils in terms of community services, parks, rec, library? There's no other impact if we have less pupils and more young adults on police or fire or anything else? In our experience, everything else, a body is a body.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
You know, one thing I would add is the fiscal impact model, um, is, is a very sophisticated model that was developed for the city. But it generally did not make a big difference between one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. We've really pushed the envelope to try to dig down on the bedroom counts in terms of pupil generation for schools. But to do that type of analysis for every other service is kind of beyond fiscal impact analysis that I think, as far as we're aware of, happens anywhere. We already take it to a higher level, I think probably than any other locality that we're aware of in terms of the detailed analysis that we do for fiscal impact.
I just know that as a city, we talk a lot about wanting to increase our share of certain demographic groups in which we're underrepresented. And I just want to make sure that we don't have costs associated with that that we're not considering. So, okay. The second question I have is related to process. And Mr. Shields, I don't know who can answer this, but when we referred this out to the boards and commissions before, the boards and commissions had a long list of questions, requests for information and data that were not provided at the time of referral. And the developer said those would be coming shortly. Have they provided all of those points of information, data requests? Are those items all ready to go to the boards and commissions?
Well, the, some of the things that I've paid most close attention to were the, you know, five points were in the council's motion back on August tenth to assess the revised application against those points in the motion and other input that we've gotten through the process. In terms of a comprehensive list of all of the comments and questions, I can't answer that question, you know, whether there's been that, the comprehensive checking of every box. Um, but we have, I think the staff report tries to capture what the majority of the comments, where they were coalescing around and how this revision addresses those major concerns. And, um, and so I think we've got that information that we can reflect back to the boards and commissions when, and I think there'll be a process discussion next, but when it gets back to the boards and commissions, they'll be able to track where they were before and, and have information about how those concerns have been addressed.
I guess my question is that before council makes a decision about which process to follow at this point, it would be helpful to know, if we just referred this back to boards and commissions, would they have the information they wanted? That's my question. Because last time, there was information that people wanted to have, the CACT wanted, you know, the update on the traffic. Um, they didn't have it at the time. That's why they deferred. So there were a lot of boards and commissions that deferred. And if we're going to consider the possibility of referring this directly to the boards and commissions, I would just want the boards and commissions to be clear about the information they wanted so that we can get a report about whether we have that or not.
We, we believe that this is a complete application. And, and so it is, um, the information is there for the board and commissions to review and comment on. The, um, I think one of, in the last iteration, one of the major complaints we got from the boards and commissions was that so much was in flux, that the plans were before the boards and commissions, but then we would go before the boards and commissions and say, this is going to change, that is going to change, the other thing's going to change. And I think the boards and commissions got frustrated with that. And so I think what we have now is an application, um, that the developer wants to take forward and, and present to all the boards and commissions, and it is the plan. I think the area that we do believe more, that the developers acknowledged more work will be done is on the voluntary concessions. But I think in board and commission review, the voluntary concessions are pretty, pretty easy to get your arms around, uh, pretty quickly as opposed to whole blocks of, you know, the, the fundamentals of the building possibly shifting around, uh, which is where we were three months ago.
Okay. And my last question is just a process question. And my last question is just a process question. I want to understand the difference in two key areas between sending this back to first reading and referring it out to the boards and commissions. And the first one is the number of opportunities for public input between the two scenarios and the time at which a final vote would be taken, assuming we got to that point.
I think that, I have to wait for the mic to turn on. I think that somewhat depends. If the decision were tonight, this application is, in terms of its technical standing, the item that requires a first reading and a second reading is the zoning ordinance. And this zoning ordinance does not need technically, from a legal perspective, a new first reading. Everything else is a resolution, which doesn't need a first reading at all as a technical matter. But what we have is an application the council has taken an action on in April. It's been revised, and now the review can proceed as a technical matter. Our proposed schedule is for it to come back to the city council for consideration on December 14th, which would be your last meeting in December. We would have a briefing for the council, per the schedule that's in your packet, in mid-November on all the board and commission comments so that you could receive those, consider those, make final changes or request for changes of the developer, and then have time to see those changes and then take action on December 14th. If there were a new first reading added to that process, that could happen on September 14th, at your next meeting. There could be a public hearing at that time, or there could be another date that's decided. And that's, you know, that's for the council to determine. With that, if it's December 14th, effectively what that does is delay the referral to the boards and commissions by one week. If that first reading were pushed out further, then it would get to the board and commissions later. If the goal was to keep that December 14th date, then the net effect of that is to compress the amount of time that the boards and commissions have to review the application. If, so that's a quick summary of some of the process issues.
Okay. I've got a few questions. Did you want to say something, Nate, or?
I just have a quick comment. I think Ms. Oliver raises a very good point about the fiscal impact model. And I think Mr. Shields sort of explained it to me once when I sort of asked some similar questions. And I think it shows a little bit of the age and the stress that the fiscal impact model is under, and I mean that with all due respect to the model itself. But it was never intended to sort of account for, you know, police, you know, do we need new parks as a result of increased residential in the city? It was never encompassed that way. And Mr. Shields, at one point, basically, when I kept pressing this issue, said, well, that's what the tax benefits are supposed to go towards of the spin-off, which kind of gets to the point that I think I was trying to allude to earlier. You can't keep double-tripping the money. It's either for a tax rate increase of what the throw-off is going to be from the gross revenues, or it's going to be for other public uses like parks, et cetera. And that's why I kept pressing on, you know, sort of what is the absorption rate when it comes to, are we going to need new parks? Hence, now we're pressing for voluntary concessions to parks. Are we going to need an expanded library because of all the new residents? Hence, now we're trying to put in standard proffer language for these various public usage where we didn't have that before. And there seems to be community and boards and commissioning clear support for it, which leads me to clearly think that we need to think holistically because there are all these pressure points. When the model was developed years ago, before, when I was on council, it was like, eh, we'll look at the model, and here we go, and we don't need to sort of worry about all these other factors because we didn't have all the buildup that now we're looking at on the residential. And I think we're completely different times now. That's why I think we're pushing for these various more standard proffer packages because we know we can't do everything. Like, you know, whatever the spin-off is going to be from economic development isn't going to cover all the other expenses. That's why I think we're looking to press on other levers, which again, you know, I think your point helped my thinking as well, that that's, that's why I wanted to see further analysis of what is our absorption point and what, you know, how much can we take on, how quickly, and how soon, and where is this going to lay out from a planning perspective of where the residential or mixed use is going to be? So thanks for helping me think through my thinking, Ms. Oliver.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, are we going to do a second round of comments for everybody, or are you going to speak now and then we do a second round? What's your game plan?
Well, if you've got some more comments, let's just put them on the table. I mean, I don't see any point in not putting them on the table tonight. I have some comments I'm going to make. I'd be happy to hear yours.
I don't want to cut in front of you because I want to hear what you have to say.
No, go ahead. That's fine.
Okay. Well, I'll just want to ask, because there have been some questions about whether, setting aside the substance of the application, the legality of what's being considered, which is that we would simply allow this new information and revised information to roll out to the boards and commissions. It was my understanding that the city attorney communicated with us that there was no legal requirement for another first reading based on the fundamentals of what is in the application that's before us tonight. Is that correct?
She indicated that there was no requirement for a second first reading, or for a new first reading with this revised application.
Okay, fine. Just wanted to clear that up because, you know, certainly we don't want to do anything illegal or that even invites anything illegal substantively.
I guess I should caveat that by saying I don't want to speak for the city attorney.
Oh, well, I-
But she has communicated with the city council and-
And there's a delicacy involved in, you know, revealing things that the city attorney communicates to us, but that's why I tried to phrase the question in the way that I did. And I believe that that's what she would, what you said is what she would say if she were here, I believe. And you don't even have to speak to that because, you know.
I think we're safe in saying that there's not a technical requirement for it, but it is a decision that the council can make.
I understand that. And moving on to that-
Whichever is the council's pleasure.
I understand. That's why I said, you know, legally as opposed to, you know, issues that individuals may have with, you know, aspects of the plan. Speaking of that, I'd just like to second what Ms. Connelly said about ADUs. I think 6% at 60 AMI is what we really need to have for this project because this is a marquee project for the city. And we do need to have workforce housing for teachers and public safety folks. And I think this housing product presents a uniquely positive opportunity to provide that, so. On the traffic, I just want to commend the CACT, which was referred to earlier, for their hard work on this. Having lived in this area, you may have heard me mention this before, for 30 years at this intersection, just down from it, my observation is exactly what the data show, which is the afternoon rush hour for about an hour is, you know, it reminds you that you live in a major metropolitan area. It's tough. Most of the rest of the time, in fact, almost all of the rest of the time, the problem in this area is not volume, but it's speed and traffic movements and lack of safety in those aspects. You know, my wife was hit coming out of Kenny Sanoco some years ago by a car barreling eastbound and making the cut, turn too fast, and the car was upon her as soon as she was there. I'm pleased that CACT has done a lot of work. I think we saw the pictures about how the traffic will be slowed down and stopped. There'll be regulation of traffic that now moves, I think, generally too quickly through this area. So that's just a substantive point. I wanted to speak to something that Ms. Connelly said. As to process, it is, to some degree, overwhelming for our city to absorb something as difficult as this, and yet that is what they pay us to do. So we're trying to do it. My approach to trying to absorb something that's large and difficult to digest is to take it in small bites. In my opinion, the process that we've gone through, while difficult, has achieved, I think any fair-minded person would say, significant progress in the quality of the application. I would therefore like to see the boards and commissions continue the good work that I think they've done already. I mean, to some degree, you know, we're supposed to be the wise heads up here, and ultimately we do decide, of course, and we have the ultimate leverage. But, you know, we started out, for instance, on Park Avenue. The initial application was we're going to have residential there. And well, some didn't like that, and so we changed it to a park. And then some didn't like that, so we changed it to commercial. And a lot of folks across the street didn't like that. Believe you me, I know. I listen to them. And so we've changed it back to residential, which is where it began, something like, you know, 18 months ago. I mean, that to me suggests that we need to entrust more of this work to the people who really roll up their sleeves at the board and commission level and, you know, try to achieve solutions that they then present to us for a final decision. So whatever process we use, number one, I think it needs to be legal. Number two, I think it needs to push as much of the work down to the boards and commissions as we can. And where that puts us on the calendar is, you know, I'm not sure that we're going to meet next Monday because of the Jewish holidays. I'm just not sure what our calendar is. I would like to see this thing get back out into the hands of the boards and commissions in its form, which the manager has told us is a complete application as soon as possible. Mr. Seay?
Thank you. I neglected to add my support for the view that my colleague, Phil Duncan, just exposed. I think that Ms. Oliver asked the right question, which is, really goes to, what is the greatest means of exposure to our community? We've had this project out now in one form or another for, I think, three years and two months, three weeks and five hours, and that's a long time. We've had a lot of public exposure, but it has been opaque in terms of its finality. I think we have that now. I think we have all the major pieces in play. I just really don't see another major shift in the design with massing moving here and there. We have strong partners here. Among us is someone that has completed the mosaic development, which I would say is probably even more complex than this development. Bifar, and that was the first one that was done, so you get to take all the benefits of all those things that you learned that you're not going to tell us about and make this one an even better project, I'm sure. I would like to see the boards and commissions get to this again as quickly as possible. I think putting it in the hands of hundreds of people that have vested interests in one piece or another of it, that have taken a look at this and now can answer for themselves whether, in fact, you've taken the last 18 months or so in trying to refine this project and made it the very best that it can be, that's acceptable, that's buildable, that we could approve, and that will begin to generate the tax revenues and bring the public benefits that we've been looking forward to. And, you know, give finances like Bikenetics a second home so they can serve the population, millennials who come and go on bicycles. I just also want to say that any comments I said earlier with respect to homework and so on, they were not meant to be ad hominem attacks. I hope that they'll take in the spirit that is given. This is indeed a bully pulpit, and as we all know, I can be a bully sometimes. Thank you.
So it sounds like people are starting to make conclude, conclusory comments. I've got some that are a little more basic, which I didn't really have a chance to make earlier, but I would like to make a few comments and ask a few questions. One, I think the project is improved. I think you've done some nice work in massing and redesigned the elements of this project. I have to say, I'm a bit frustrated it took this long to get here. This is something I think probably should have happened about a year ago. Which leads me to another comment, which I feel like I haven't delved deep enough into some of the changes to really fully understand them. In other words, I've heard about them tonight, but to me, we really want to get into the details of it, not just kind of from 30,000 feet. I don't feel like I've gotten waist-deep. I feel like my feet are in the water, but I haven't got waist-deep in understanding the revised project, which on its face is improved. I do have some questions, some comments I'd like to make. One, I think the public and council, maybe boards and commissions as well, would benefit from hearing more on the traffic issue, maybe a report from your traffic consultant. I know we've heard about some of the intersections, some of the grades at some of the intersections, but I think having a better understanding about traffic flow, pedestrian flow, bike flow, I think would be helpful to everyone. I think that's very important to the community, is how this project's going to impact their neighborhoods, their parking, the whole nine yards. The idea of shuttle bus to metro, I think having that available to your, you know, your full clientele, your apartment residents would be great, particularly if they're already going over there anyway. I have a question about undergrounding on Broad Street. You mentioned undergrounding West. I didn't hear anything about Broad. Are you going to underground utilities on Broad Street?
They're already underground.
Oh, so there are no utilities on the Broad Street frontage?
Not above ground.
Okay. So you're going to underground on West, and is that going to leave above-grade utility wires on Park Avenue?
It'll leave what is on Park Avenue further down the street and away from us.
But at your location, will it be undergrounded?
Yes. It will be underground, yes.
On Park as well, okay. I guess also a question arises, have you given consideration to condominiums, like making, breaking out some of these apartments into condominium product? I think it would be good if you could just give some more consideration of that. You may be multifamily, buy-and-hold kind of place, but I think the idea of having a condominium product might be helpful. They've been successful in this city in the past, and so I guess I would suggest giving some consideration of that as well. We talked about the 6%. Can you give us a breakdown on 60, 80, 100, what percent of your AMI? Like, in other words, 30% of your units are 60%, you know, 40% or 80% of your affordable units? Do you have a breakdown?
We are working on that with the Housing Commission right now. The policy is 6% and between 50% and 80% AMI. We proposed 1/3 60%, 1/3 80%, and 1/3 100%. And we recognize the difference in that proposal and what the city's policies and past has been on ADUs. And we had a really good dialogue with the Housing Commission about that, and we are reworking that. We're coming, we're going to sit back down with the Housing Commission and talk about what we can do to get back in line with where the city's policy is and come to some conclusions that the Housing Commission can support.
Okay. Let me ask you a little about Park Avenue. So what's the height of the multifamily residential on Park Avenue?
On Park Avenue, it is between about the low 30s to about 43 feet because the site, this site has a drastic, about a 14-foot drop, I think, is what it is from the far west side on West Street and where we end on Park Avenue next to the church. It's a pretty standard three-story.
Three-story, okay. And let me ask you, are there entrances on Park or are the entrances internal and that's just basically the facade?
There are no entrances on Park. We've got, again, a substantial grade change there, and creating steps and things like that for walk-ups there on Park Avenue was a challenge. And also, we thought that from the dialogue with the neighbors on Park Avenue, a quieter street with less activity was more desirable.
Okay. And what is the height of the garage behind the 30 to 43-foot?
The garage is, I believe, about 59 feet.
Okay, so the garage is 20 to 30 feet, or 20 to 25 feet higher than the facade is?
About 15 feet, something like that.
Well, if it's 59 and you're talking about 32, you're talking about-
32 to 43 because of slight, slight going that way. So it's, you're right, it's 15 to 20-some feet.
And will any of that be visible from the multi-stories of the, part of the houses above? In other words, you've got two-story, single-family houses across the street. What's the angle for that, for the, do you know?
We can provide a bulk angle on this design. The garage is stepped back about almost 30 feet from the townhouse-style apartments. Originally, I believe we were, the garage was set back nine feet.
Yeah, I mean, I had a real problem with it before. You're making improve, this is an improvement?
Garage is almost 50 feet now back from the Park Avenue street.
Okay. I would encourage you to consider not just the view from the ground level, but actually from the houses across the street, and depending on the, you know, bulk plane or bulk angle, to consider improvements to the garage. It looked to me like kind of painted precast concrete. I don't know if it's an improvement on that, but the extent you can make it look- I don't know if it's an improvement on that, but the extent you can make it look like the townhouses more than it appeared before, looked like precast concrete with holes, you know, approximating windows, but I think having a beefed-up facade, particularly if it's visible even from the second story of the houses next door, would be appropriate. Let's see what else I've got here. I'd like to know more about your retail plan as well. I didn't hear much about that today, and I think that's really important to how the community views this project. You know, service retail, yoga, you know, salons, nail salons, they're not what I think the community's looking for here. And I understand they help pay the bills, and so you have a desire to have as many options as you can, but I think our interest is a little bit different. And so I think it's going to be real important to us to see what restrictions you put on your retail and what you're proposing. I haven't seen that, and if it's in this stack of stuff, my apologies to you, but I think that's going to be important to hear what you're willing to commit to as far as ensuring high-quality retail. That's not service-oriented retail, but, you know, towards true retail. Restaurants particularly, I think, are very, you know, good for the neighborhood, and I think they're good for revenue generation as well. So to me, that's going to be a critical element, what kind of restrictions you're willing to put on your retail plan and what that plan is. And again, I'd just like to hear more about it, either from staff or from you all. Let's see, my other thoughts. There's sort of a, is it a kind of a tunnel on West? Is that how you get in? Is that what that entrance is, essentially like a, or is it totally open up to the sky? What's that?
It's a, it's a pedestrian street that's completely open to the sky.
Okay.
It used to be, I guess a good description would be a kind of a tunnel. It was about 18 feet wide, and it had a building over top of it. It was, I think it was about 16 or 17 feet high. But we've separated the hotel building and the apartment building and created a 30-foot-wide street, which we're planning to activate. And that has enabled us to provide more light and air and a little bit more openness to the market square also.
Okay.
We're really pleased with the way that turned out.
Okay. I mean, some of the details I'd mentioned earlier, I kind of wanted to delve into that I haven't really seen, outdoor seating. In other words, are there locations for outdoor seating? If so, where are they? Are they, do they encroach upon the sidewalk width, or they set in so that you still have clear 10-foot sidewalk, for example? Street trees? Is there any on-street parking on the outside of your project, not just inside of your project? You know, crosswalks, sidewalk widths, any bike facilities? I know you're talking about bike share, although your contribution seems substantially less than the actual cost of bike share. I think the cost of maintaining a bike share, I believe, is in the 20s, if memory serves me correctly, and I think your contribution is nine grand. But I'd like to know more of those details and really how this project operates, not just from the inside, but from the outside. And I haven't heard those yet, and those are important to me. I'd like to know the average square foot of your apartment, if you could tell me that, the average. Do you know what your average square footage is of your apartments?
It's approximately 960 square feet on average.
It's fairly big. 960, okay.
Talking about the gross, or...
Sorry.
Give me gross and net, if you'd like.
Okay, so the average is nine...
Nine, 960.
Okay, yeah. So the nine, the average is 960, and that is on the gross basis? On the gross basis, sorry.
Okay. A comment as well about the voluntary concessions. I think it is important for us to keep particular school contributions. I mean, that's, we've heard a lot of discussion about tonight about residential density and concerns about that, and they really come back to service cost, and we're in the midst of building, for example, new school facilities, pretty much all of our schools, and so it's very important to us to have the money to do that. And so I would encourage you and city staff to be cognizant of the fact that those contributions are important to us to help us maintain the quality of our schools, and so when those get cut down, that presents a problem, I think, to at least many of us in the council. So I would encourage you to try to keep the same contribution level for school capital costs that have been done in recent similar projects. I am concerned about the residential density overall. I, I think it's something in the city we have to be concerned about and be cognizant of for a lot of reasons that have already been stated tonight. I do also have the concern about turning single-family lots that are zoned and comp-planned for single-family lots into multifamily units. I think that's something as a city we ought to not tread lightly on, and that we ought to really do that with trepidation, because I'm not sure it's a good precedent for us, but that's something, again, that I would have some concern about. And I think just in general, I would say you've made some nice improvements. I mean, it'd sound like it from my questions, but I think you, the project has come a long way. I think it's got a ways to go still, but I think it's come a long way. So I'm interested in hearing more information about it, and I thank you for your efforts you put in. Are there the comments people would like to make? Anyone else? Okay, so now we really have to decide how we're going to proceed, and we don't have to maybe decide. Maybe that's something we talk about some more at our next meeting, which we can do if people would like to, or we can try to come to resolution tonight on how we might, this project might proceed. Any thoughts from folks? I know we've heard from one or two, or maybe three or four, but...
I think the mayor, the question that you asked goes directly to the heart of the question that Ms. Oliver asked before, which is, what are the opportunities for additional public exposure, not only from the boards and commissions and their particular, particular eyes' interest, but for us as well? So this, I think, you know, this is beginning of the conversation for us, so there's a lot of data here, and I must admit, I haven't looked at nearly all of it, certainly not in depth on the traffic that Ms. Conley has, but I think this gives us the opportunity, if we don't decide tonight, that we can spend some more time asking questions of staff and others, and then we can decide at our next meeting how we proceed on this process.
Are there other thoughts on that comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I guess I would hate to miss the opportunity. I'm just looking, I asked the clerk to produce a calendar of the board and commission meetings in September and October to get some feel for how many opportunities each of the boards and commissions would have to take a bite at this again. You know, CACT meets tomorrow night. I'm sure they have other things on their agenda, but I would hate to miss the opportunity for them to receive this material and at least some sort of staff briefing so that they could, you know, begin chewing over it. Housing Commission meets on the 15th, Tree Commission on the 16th. I mean, you know, every, every day that we delay here is just, you know, another opportunity lost or delayed for citizen input at, I think, what is a pretty critical time. You know, we've got everybody's attention, everybody's kind of in high gear, the room is full, that's good, we want the neighbors involved, you know, let's take advantage of that. So is there, is there any way that we can proceed with this in the manner that would enable the boards and commissions basically to receive the material that we received tonight and at least in some way begin to consider it?
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Excellent, Mr. Mayor. I mean, certainly, I want boards and commissions' full engagement, but we don't even know what this project is at this point. I mean, we've begun to look at it, we've got some materials, we've got huge gaps in terms of what is the retail plan, what are the economics. I'm not comfortable sending this to the boards and commissions until I understand what this project really is, and we don't really have that yet. Yes, we've taken some steps, some of them have been positive, some of them less positive, but with regard to the retail plan, the fundamental underpinnings, the fundamental economics, what is the city really going to get from this? What's our degree of assurance? That kind of thing is a nail down, and so I would be more comfortable if we took a little time to do that. And Councilmember Z made a good point. I think we have some materials we've got to go through, we need to get some additional citizen input, and then I think we'll be in a position to figure out the best approach. Right now, I think the best approach is first reading. The key thing, though, is that we maximize our leverage to get what we want out of this project. We reduce our risk, maximize the return, whether it's measured in terms of transportation, economics, reduce density to the extent we possibly can, and then I think we send it to boards and commissions for further refinement.
Okay. Other, other comments? Mr. Perug?
So one of the reasons why I suggested that we perhaps go to first reading first is, you know, I certainly want to hear from our citizens and potentially boards and commission members, and that may inform, you know, motions, et cetera, that we put forward, or any comments that we provide. So that's why I'm suggesting that, and I think we can do that fairly quickly without causing undue delay. So, and again, kind of what I go back to is, while there have been improvements made, there, there's ways that some of this could have been, you know, anticipated and addressed before, so, you know, I hear what others are saying, but I do think that that formal first reading process does give an opportunity for our citizens to comment in a, in a formal way, which I think is important.
Any comments on that end of the table?
If we go to formal first reading, Mr. Shields, with the advertisement that's required, what's the earliest we can take a decision?
The first reading would have a, if the council were to do that, there'd be a public hearing in the, in the form that you do for every vote that you ever take, but it would not be the advertised, the legal public hearing. It would be, that would occur at second reading, and so we would have plenty of time for advertisement for that. So the short answer is September 14th. Would not be a problem if the council were to choose that date.
Okay.
So I guess I'm just trying to get my arms around what people are thinking. I understand some folks pretty clearly. I wonder if I could throw this out as a general consensus, is that we don't take action tonight, whether it's informal or, obviously, we're not going to take formal first reading action tonight, but even informal action, and mull this over until next week, and then we can decide whether we want to go forward on a first reading, or whether we want to just informally have a consensus to send it out, or delay even further if we, people feel like they're not getting the information they want. In other words, not necessarily taking action one way or the other tonight.
Mayor Tarter, from a staff perspective, it would be helpful for us to know what the council's desires are for your agenda for the, for your next meeting. If the desire is to take a formal vote, then we will have the packet, you know, we will set the agenda and have the packet for that. If the desire is to refer it out to, you know, if, if the decision were to allow the application to go forward, then we would take that action essentially tomorrow administratively to get it out to boards and commissions. But I think leaving tonight without knowing what date we're shooting for, or whether we're going to take a formal action or not, I think just procedurally is, is a little bit difficult to administer.
Well, I guess, I, go ahead.
You know, I think a lot of it hinges on the topics that we discussed with respect to additional consideration being provided and requested and provided by, by the developer, and I think that all hinges on, on what the analysis is from our independent consultant. So that tells us at that point how much additional room there is, and then we can decide among ourselves whether, in fact, it's worth going after or not. It's all another discussion, political nature. I am all in favor of having a broader discussion on how much more exposure, what the public process is, but I, at the same time, I certainly think that if this is final, and I'm told it's final, as final as it's going to be, then it should be given out to the boards and commissions. We should start that process. So if, the sooner we get into the hands of the EDA, the sooner we'll be able to take advantage of their considerable talents and their perception on, on the commercial versus residential component. The sooner we get into the hands of the Tree Commission, we will be able to get the feedback on whether, in fact, what's being presented now is adequate or not. The sooner we get in the hands of CACT, we'll hear back from them whether this, this project is based on a flawed traffic study, or whether, in fact, it's, you know, pretty good based on what we have now. We, we're not going to know that in, in terms of sooner, and I think sooner is better than later. And I don't have a problem in sending it out to boards and commissions beginning tomorrow.
Other folks want to weigh in on that?
I'm so ambivalent on this one. I don't have a strong opinion. I feel like we have voted on it twice for first reading. We all seem to like it better, so, and we all have questions. I think I have to, especially myself with Mr. Z, that the sooner it gets into people's hands, the better. I would not be opposed to having a first reading vote next week, but I feel like we've already done that, and it's only going to be a sort of a pro forma first reading vote, because we've already done first reading. So to put it into the hands of boards and commissions seems to make sense. So that's why I'm like this, completely ambivalent.
So Ms. Oliver, you may be deciding an opinion here. What do you think?
I'm interested in getting it out into the hands of boards and commissions fairly quickly. I do, however, I am conscious of the large number of voices that were forced to be silent this evening because this is a work session and not a public hearing, and so they were unable to speak. I think that it's important for everybody to hear what people have to say. We've gotten a lot of letters, we know there's campaigns advocating for one side and the other. I know there's a lot of talk going on. I, I wish there could be a public hearing, a chance for people to speak, but I am ready to send it to boards and commissions.
Okay, so it looks, I'd say, I'm going to hold, I'm going to hold off on that, if you don't mind, Mr. Lasso. So it looks like we have four people who want to send this on to boards and commissions right now. Is that accurate, or are you on the fence, Ms. Conley?
Yes, I'm on the fence. Yes, I'm on the fence.
Well, so the bottom line is, I'm trying to get some action, I'm trying to resolve this one way or the other. If we have majority...
Here's, Mr. Mayor, let me suggest this. I think we schedule this for, we put it on the agenda for next Monday, we allow the public to comment on it, we make the decision, and if the decision then is to send it to boards and commissions, that's what the decision is. I mean, I think, A, it's premature from the standpoint of public input, general public input. Secondly, when you send an incomplete project to boards and commissions, you're putting them in an impossible position of having to, to answer, to ask questions which there aren't answers to, and as we already know from tonight, there are major gaps. As much as there have been improvements and additional information, there are major gaps in what this project really is. And until we get clarification, and I think that's our job as council, to at least get the four corners of this, the economics of this nailed down, and then the boards and commissions can look at fine-tuning, they can look at massing, they can look at those other things that they do, but it's our job to get the economics nailed down, and the economics aren't nailed down on this. So I think some additional time, plus I think the public ought to have the opportunity to comment at this point before we send it to boards and commissions, and then we can go ahead and do that when we've got some degree of certainty that we don't have now. Anyway, that's my suggestion.
We can stay here all night and give speeches.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. We can stay here all night and give speeches. We can even get Ms. Berry in here giving a speech. I mean, obviously, we're going to talk about this much, much more. The point of sending it out to boards and commissions is to try to get the work started sooner. There's nothing that would prohibit us from, when we next meet, if it's going to be Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, whenever we're going to meet next week, of having a de facto public hearing about this, if folks want to come out again. I frankly think their time would be better spent, you know, in the boards and commissions, dealing with the specific issues. What I hear from people is that we've worked this long enough, that, you know, people start out with a list of seven things they didn't like, and they've worked it down to like one or two that they're concerned about. So that tells me that we need to get the topic into the hands of CACT and the EDA and the specific groups to work those one or two, and subsets of citizens may want to be involved in, you know, the EDA component and the, the transportation component, but I don't know, I just, I'm not sure that I see the point of bringing everyone out again to give what are fundamentally the same speeches that we have been hearing, been given for, you know, the last 18 months.
Just one... Mr. Perug?
Yeah, just one order of process. I'm not going to be giving speeches, because I'm not running. So, but on that point, I do think that there's a fundamental issue, and I think we're sort of straddling the fence a little bit, and I know this is not necessarily unorthodox, but I think people need to stand on their records if they're pushing for this to go forward. So somebody put a motion forward, and we'll vote on it and then move on.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, so...
And by motion, I mean whether we send it out tonight or we hold a public hearing.
Yep, we don't actually cast votes in a work session, do we? I thought we were trying to achieve some...
Nothing that says that we can't, and we certainly do. Ms. Duncan, we do that every time we go into a closed and open session.
As is abundantly clear, I've made my position.
So let's, let's take a vote on it and know where we're at.
But I'm trying to defer to the mayor, because I know the mayor likes to try to achieve consensus.
So in that vein, in trying to achieve consensus, might I suggest this, and we're not going to get a full to get a full consensus, I don't think, tonight because the opinions are too different. It seems to me that there is a desire to get some more information. There is a general desire to make sure the public, you're sitting right here, they're probably chomping at the bit to tell us all sorts of things about this project, their concerns, which is totally appropriate, and it should be done. And so, I guess I might suggest that we go ahead and not take action either informally or formally tonight, and to plan on next meeting having direction for boards and commissions, whether it's, you know, one way or the other, whatever it might be. But in other words, have that teed up for our next meeting. And that's not going to please everybody. It may not please the majority, but, Ms. Conley?
So, that means in the next seven or eight days, we will refer it to boards and commissions slash vote, or we have to decide tonight on that?
We can refer them at that time. In other words, at our next meeting, we can either have a formal consensus that we're going to stand on our own vote, you know, in other words, there's no vote, new vote needed because everyone's positions are the same, or people may want to have a new vote. And, Mr. Shields, you can tee it up so that we can do either. In other words, you can advertise or put down the package that we can have a vote. If we choose not to have a vote and just stand on what we've already voted on, that may be a possibility as well. In other words, people feel, look, I've already taken a vote. I haven't changed my position. Maybe a new vote is not desired. That would be the will of this body. But that would be the time that we would take, give boards and commissions direction. We can do it tonight, but it doesn't seem like there's a consensus. You seem like you're kind of torn, and so that would be, make it kind of three-three. So, it doesn't seem like there's a majority that wants to move this forward at this time.
Are you torn?
I'm just trying to weigh the difference between voting another first reading next week or just referring it to boards and commissions.
I think the mayor is suggesting this since you haven't been affirmative one way or another, that it's three-three one, so, instead of hearing four-three.
I guess, yeah, that was part of what I inferred from what you said. Do you want to send it out to boards and commissions, are you, tonight? Is that something you want to do?
I am.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm just trying to understand.
I feel like I'm on the spot here.
Okay, well, don't get on the spot if you don't want to. My suggestion was to wait till next week. If you want to do something tonight, then if there's a majority that wants to do that, we can take some sort of action or the other. I didn't feel there was a majority, which is why I was trying to kind of summarize the comments of our group.
Like Mr. Duncan, I feel like we have talked this one to pieces. We've talked about it, and we've talked about it, we've talked about it. I feel like the developer knows what it is that we expect, and I think staff knows what it is that we're looking for. So, I have voted for it twice on first reading. I will vote for it again on first reading if that comes up. And if, so I'm just really confused about the difference between saying we're going to hold a first reading in eight days, or seven days, or six days, or we're going to refer it to boards and commissions. What is the difference?
Well, the first reading would be the referral out, or informally, we could say, we don't want to have another vote. We're going, we've already had the vote, and so we're going to kind of affirm, you know, that's the direction we want to take, or maybe we may want to take a different direction. We don't want to refer it out, or we want to delay, or we want to spend more time as a council looking at it before we send it out or before we make a decision.
Regardless, whichever way we do it, as Ms. Oliver pointed out, the community is going to have plenty of opportunity to comment, to be heard. They can come and speak at the meeting next week, whether we decide to do first reading or we refer it out tonight. So, it's not that we're preventing people from having any sort of input into this, boards or commission-wise or community-wise. And it's not that we're going to speed up the process too quickly so that we won't get all the information, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of thoughts. First of all, I think there are a couple of issues. First of all, are we going to hear from the public before we send it out to boards and commissions? And I think that's a fundamental question. I favor hearing from the public first. Secondly, do we do first reading or send it out to boards and commissions? To me, the other value of taking a few more days is to gather the kind of information we really need so we can have more information to go to boards and commissions with, rather than, and there have been some fundamental questions raised tonight. So, I think some additional time might be worthwhile to make the boards and commissions' reaction and input more valuable. So, I'd favor we put it on the agenda for our next meeting, have a public hearing. We can make a decision at that point based upon the information we have, and we just simply take a vote at that point.
So, before we go on, Mr. Lasso has patiently been waiting for an opportunity to speak. Go ahead. I'm sorry to delay this time.
Having been through this before, it has actually been given a first reading twice before. This is the third. This has been given a first reading twice before, and it's unclear from what you're saying, unless you're going to tell the staff now to schedule a first reading. If you wait to make that decision, you would then, I suppose, go two more weeks. So, potentially, you could have this come back in three weeks. So, it's unclear to us how this process goes. I did want to also make the point that we were in the boards and commissions. We were following the process that has been done in the past, which is when you make revisions that the boards and commissions ask you to do, which is what we did. Then you go back to the boards and commissions. It's what is actually unusual is that the council, in effect, took this back and is then reviewing it before it's allowing the boards and commissions to continue a process that they thought they were underway at the time. So, that's what, this is really an iterative process. You have, you know, refinements being made. There were questions raised. They've been answered. And everybody that's here tonight can come to each one of those meetings with the members of the boards and commissions, express their views. Then they'll be able to come back when you have your final hearing, do it all over again. They'll get to hear, go to the planning commission at least once. So, we would ask that you move it on tonight to the boards and commissions, which is where it was and frankly, where it ought to be.
Thank you. All right, so, other council members' comments. Ms. Conley?
So, thank you for helping me through that. So, I do think that we just need to send it out to boards and commissions. I think there's, the opportunity for public comment remains the same. The opportunity for developer comment remains the same, and the opportunity for staff comment remains the same. There's no guarantee that we're going to put this on December 14th. It may take more time between our now and the time that we go to a second vote, but I do think it's important to have people commenting, and I don't see the need to do a whole other first reading.
Okay. So, just so I can kind of make sure I understand the positions, it sounds like we have four people, four council members who would like to push this out to boards and commissions tonight. Is that fair to say?
Mr. Mayor, let's have a show of hands. If we're going to do this, let's just have the people that support moving forward to boards and commissions without an additional public hearing. Let's just have.
That's fine. I'm in favor of that, but I would go stronger. I mean, there's strong feelings about it. I've got strong feelings about it. And put, I mean, if people want to vote on it that way, just somebody make a motion and just say that they want the referral out. I don't really, I mean, if that's where the chips are, that's fine. But I, one thing I do feel affirmatively about is that people need to vote on it.
Well, I mean, I think that's what we're doing, whether it's.
But there's got to be a clear record of it.
Well, I think there will be a clear record of what occurs tonight, and we can do it in whatever fashion people might want to do it. But it sounds to me like we have four people right now who want to move this on, at least four, who want to move this on to boards and commissions.
I think you've done the math, Mayor.
Okay. Are there any other comments about this?
Mayor, would you like to show them?
Okay. Well, if people, people would want to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I know politics has come to a sorry pass, but if we here in this room, among us seven, after sitting here for as long as we've sat here, cannot defer to a process which simply acknowledges that we've achieved some sort of a rough consensus without having to raise hands, it's, I mean, I will make a motion if we are required to do that, but I just want to say I do so with regret, and I appreciate your efforts to try to get us to work through this. And I have the highest regard for Mr. Schneider and Mr. Baruch, and, you know, I just think we attach so much significance to this first reading process when what we really are trying to do here is work the thing so that it can get into the hands of the people who can help us make the right decision at the end. I have no idea when the end will come. You know, I may not even be here when the end comes. At this point, I'm not sure I want to be.
I'm not paying to watch that movie.
Exactly. I mean, is it really necessary in a work session for us to, all right, Mr. Schneider says that it is necessary, so therefore I move that we refer this to boards and commissions tonight.
Let me just defer to a second to Mr. Shields. Mr. Shields, procedurally, can you advise us in terms of the, you know, how this might work? It's very unusual, I think, to do a motion.
The council, by its rules of procedure, can make a motion and take action at work session. It's not your normal practice, but it certainly can be done. There's no prohibition on that. This matter was listed on your agenda properly, and so there's no reason not to. So, a motion has been made, and if there's a second, then we'll record that.
I want to second the motion just so we can get a vote on it.
Okay. All right, so we have a second, so.
And then, since this is a procedural matter, it can simply be a voice vote, and then we'll record that. Or if it's the pleasure of the chair to make it a roll call vote, we could do it that way as well, but a voice vote would suffice.
Just a brief bit more discussion. I mean, I posted online, and everybody knows that this meeting was not expected to produce any kind of a vote. And, you know, certainly that's how I entered this meeting, with that expectation, and I'm disappointed that we are where we are, but certainly, everybody's paying attention, so that's fine, I guess. But just, you know, I would like folks to know that this is being done outside the process that I expected.
Okay. Well, why don't we just do a voice vote on this?
Okay. So, the motion has been made by Mr. Duncan, second by Mr. Baruch, all in, and this is the motion to.
Mr. Mayor, I want to express the reasons why I'm voting against this motion. Number one, I want a public hearing and the public to have an opportunity to participate that they've not had tonight before we take this action. And number two, we need clarification on the fundamentals of this project so we know what it is, and we can tell the boards and commissions what it is they're working on. So, I'm voting no for those reasons and would have supported first reading.
And I'm going to echo the same comments without belaboring it, and my motion, or my seconding of the motion, in no way is my support for it, but it's to get it to a vote, just so it's clear on that point.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take the vote then.
Okay. So, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Repose. No.
Okay. All right, the motion passes four to three.
So, I think, why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we will go ahead and get on with the rest of our business? Thank you all. Yeah, five-minute break, you guys, probably time to go. Thank you. Congratulations. Yep.[1333.97]
Some degrees.
Why don't we go ahead and get rolling, and keep rolling if we can?
Thank you, Mayor Carter. Susan Bell is here to give us an update on some of the additional work since our last discussion back in August on the parking regs. For this item, and for allowable uses in commercial districts, what we're asking for council is, by consensus, by a nodding of heads, to allow this to go to the Planning Commission for further development into legislative language, that would then come back to the city council for first reading. And we suggest that procedural way is, rather than have the council actually adopt some language on first reading, and then refer to the Planning Commission, that could, we think it'd be a lot of value to have the Planning Commission be involved in this early on, so you get some of their work product, along with staff's ideas, right from the beginning. And so our goal tonight is just to give a quick overview of the issues, not to repeat the whole presentation from a month ago, but some updates, and then, and seek consensus on those two points.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you and give you a little bit of an update on what we've been doing on the parking. You'll probably remember that when we spoke in August, we were just getting the data from the interns' work, actually out in the field, and we were analyzing some of the numbers. And I think it's fair to say that the numbers are pretty definitive. We looked at office and mixed-use projects for weekday occupancy, and what we found was that the actual occupancies are well below the number of parking spaces required. So, again, the importance of that data was to put some experience in the field into the mix, as we discuss what was happening in comparison to neighboring jurisdictions. As you recall, when we presented previously, we noted that Fairfax County and Arlington County require far less parking, and the potential exists to create a competitive disadvantage for the city in attracting new office and commercial development because of the current ratio. That was one of our key findings. The goals are clear, and I think you probably would know them by heart as well, but we really want to be sure that at the end of this project, you're requiring adequate, but not excessive, parking for future projects. And secondly, incorporating demand management techniques. That's really the way to make this work. Your current regulations, 250 to 300 per square feet, your neighbors requiring considerably less. Survey results, as I mentioned, show that we have substantial parking that is sitting vacant throughout the business day, at nights, and on weekends. And even the Flower Building, which had the highest occupancy rate during the day, was still below the total amount of parking, provided not even taking into account the additional spaces at the Hilton Garden Inn across the street. So, the second item that we are bringing to you is the requirement that TDM be a part of the zoning ordinance requirements related to office parking reductions. So what you'll see us bringing back to you is a menu of TDM choices, and an expectation that not only a TDM plan be provided at the time a project is going through review, but that the developer agree to monitoring long-term. We'll also be bringing back parking garage design improvements. These are not a false church garage. They are unfortunately, the Courthouse Plaza garage in Arlington, probably right next to each other, in fact, some of the worst parking you will ever have the pleasure to use. But it's poor design that gets people not using garages. It's everything from dim lighting, narrow spaces, encroachments, and the language that we're considering and will be discussing with the commission will prohibit these kinds of encroachments, and require some additional enhancements to make garages easier to navigate, spaces wider, and so forth. The fourth area that we're looking at is creating permission for conversion of some parking spaces, we haven't worked up an exact percentage or number yet, for other public purposes associated with other modes of travel, bicycle parking, carpool, vanpool, carshare spaces, electric charging stations, and the like. But that conversion would require approval of the zoning administrator, and would not be done without that approval. And then the last area that we're looking at is...
Could I interrupt you just for a second?
Sure.
Going back a ways. I guess, I'm just a little concerned about that, in that, shouldn't we ought to be planning for those things as separate kind of functions? In other words, like, carpool space, we're going to make sure you have a certain ratio of carpool space, or a certain ratio of vanpool, you know, one per whatever. I guess I'm a little concerned about taking parking spaces, are you talking about current parking spaces, or in the future?
It could be both, actually. It could be existing spaces where they may be excess or not used, based on survey data, and that there is no real good place for a charging station, or for bike parking, or bike racks, or things like that. So it's going to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, subject to standards. We'll have to have standards to satisfy the city attorney. But the idea would be that some of these other kinds of uses, if there's no cars that require those spaces or need those spaces, these are beneficial public uses.
I agree with that on existing places, but I would say going forward, I'd like to have standards for bike spaces, so no one's taking a car space.
Sure.
We've already planned for a bike space, we've already planned for a charging station, we've already planned for carpool, so they're already providing those things, so that we wouldn't need to take a parking space for that.
On new construction, we should be taking those into account.
Yeah, so I guess that seems appropriate for existing construction, or existing buildings, but not so for future buildings.
I think part of what happens is, over time, the uses may change, particularly with a strong TDM, and you may have excess spaces. So, again, having it subject to approval, I think, gives you the flexibility to work it through.
Thank you.
And this could be helpful for businesses who may want to provide bike parking, and have, they feel they've got extra, they've got room to do it, and the best place is near the front door, so being able to take a car parking space with approval and review of the zoning administrator, to make sure it would actually work, and put in, like, bike racks. Right now, you can't really do that.
My only reason I brought the point was, is that we hadn't provided those things in the first place. You know, hey, want to go take a park?
Yeah, right.
You know, because what kills me is that we don't have bike parking anywhere, or we don't have adequate amount, in my opinion.
Well, can I, since we're in a work session, and we can actually speak. So my understanding of this is, like, for instance, on Mason Row, they identify us as a tweener market. We're not yet, you know, transit, walk, bike-friendly as we want to be. And so they're going to park it at about 90 percent, or thereabouts. But we would hope, as time went on, that we would become more walk-bike and transit-friendly, and that some of those parking places that they're building today, five years from now, could be converted to vanpools, or charging stations, or whatever. Is that, is that what we're trying to, is that what you're trying to tell me?
That's part of the thinking that goes into this. The transportation demand management is so key to this, and with the monitoring over time, you get a feel for how the spaces are being used. If they're going vacant, they might as well be put to another beneficial use.
But we also have a lot of existing parking lots that might benefit if someone wanted to, to be able to put bike parking there, which doesn't exist presently. So the ability to convert thousands of vacant spaces, thousands of existing surface spaces, we'd like the ability to do this, in an informed way, with an approval process through the zoning administrator.
And the same would be true if a space is substandard due to an encroachment, or overhead utilities, or something like that, that gets it put to some, you know, reasonable use.
But I don't think there are any, no one's under any compulsion, if you're a business owner, here to do that conversion, it's just additional cost, even if they do see the benefits. Are you suggesting, then, that we have some system of outreach, as well as incentives, to do that?
I think at this stage, we would be creating the permission. I think it would take some further exploration to put a program in place where there was actual outreach to employers and property owners. And then the last item that we're talking about is review of parking modifications. As I'm sure you're aware, today, there are occasions when parking requests are actually being heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals, as well as by the Planning Commission. What we are proposing here is to eliminate the dual path, and have the Planning Commission hear all requests to reduce or modify parking requirements, including the off-site requests that now go to the BZA when there's a hardship aspect to it. We think that it's both beneficial from the standpoint of process, but also ensures a consistent application of your policy, and a look at all modes at the same time. And that really sums it up. There's five areas that we'll be looking at, from the parking ratios that we've talked about a number of times, through the review of parking modifications.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, we would hope with a new parking ordinance that would give the ability for the commission to give relief, that there would be standards for these other items, as a part of a TDM, required TDM. So you would have bike parking, you'd have charging stations in those items, with new construction and new development. I just want to make sure we weren't confused about the conversion option.
So, did I see bike parking as part of this, or did I miss that? Was it part of the slideshow?
We haven't developed it yet, but it's something we certainly would want to try to have those standards built in. And we do have a TDM study, which gives us guidance about, was done for the city, about the need for those kinds of items to help encourage other modes of transportation. We haven't fixed the exact number yet, of how many bikes per square feet, and that's something we would work on with the Planning Commission and further staff work.
But to be clear, that would be part of the output when it comes to the Planning Commission back to us?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be not only like ratios, and maybe proximity to, you know, entrances, things like that, kind of a complete bike parking?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any comments, questions?
This is office parking regulation, so how does this apply to a mixed-use building, like the North Gate, that has retail, office, and residential?
We're trying to focus this, first, on office parking.
So solely office?
Office, and some, office often has retail as well, so an office-retail building would come under this regime.
Okay, but no residential?
And we would like to do additional field work to look at mixed-use and residential, and come back at a later date with that. But we'd like to, the office is where we're particularly interested in having it. As you know, there was a proposal to want to go forward to get a project approved. The ratio was one of the big issues on that, and so that's one of the reasons for doing this.
So the focus is on the office? That's where we feel like we've got the most work to do.
Other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I think this is really good work, and I would support it going to the Planning Commission for further work. A couple of points. One of them is that we need to make sure that in developing...
Key findings. The goals are clear, and I think you probably would know them by heart as well. But we really want to be sure that at the end of this project, you're requiring adequate, but not excessive parking for future projects. And secondly, incorporating demand management techniques. That's really the way to make this work. Your current regulations, 250 to 300 per square feet, your neighbors requiring considerably less. Survey results, as I mentioned, show that we have well substantial parking that is sitting vacant throughout the business day, at nights, and on weekends. And even the Flower Building, which had the highest occupancy rate during the day, was still below the total amount of parking, provided not even taking into account the additional spaces at the Hilton Garden and across the street. So, the second item that we are bringing to you is the requirement that TDM be a part of the zoning ordinance requirements related to office parking reductions. So what you'll see us bringing back to you is a menu of TDM choices and an expectation that not only be a TDM plan be provided at the time a project is going through review, but that the developer agree to monitoring long term. We'll also be bringing back parking garage design improvements. These are not a false church garage. They are unfortunately, the Courthouse Plaza Garage in Arlington, probably right next to each other, in fact. Some of the worst parking you will ever have the pleasure to use. But it's poor design that gets people not using garages. It's everything from dim lighting, narrow spaces, encroachments. And the language that we're considering and will be discussing with the commission will prohibit these kinds of encroachments and require some additional enhancements to make garages easier to navigate, spaces wider, and so forth. The fourth area that we're looking at is creating permission for conversion of some parking spaces. We haven't worked up an exact percentage or number yet, for other public purposes associated with other modes of travel. Bicycle parking, carpool, vanpool, car share spaces, electric charging stations, and the like. But that conversion would require approval of the zoning administrator and would not be done without that approval. And then the last area that we're looking at is-
Could I interrupt you just for a second?
Sure.
Going back a ways. I guess I'm just a little concerned about that in that shouldn't we ought to be planning for those things as separate kind of functions? In other words, like carpool space, we're going to make sure you have a certain ratio of carpool space or a certain ratio of vanpool space, you know, one per whatever. I guess I'm a little concerned about taking parking spaces. Are you talking about current parking spaces or in the future?
It could be both, actually. It could be existing spaces where they may be excess or not used based on survey data, and that there is no real good place for a charging station or for bike parking or bike racks or things like that. So it's going to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, subject to standards. We'll have to have standards to satisfy the city attorney. But the idea would be that some of these other kinds of uses, if there's no cars that require those spaces or need those spaces, these are beneficial public uses.
I agree with that on existing places, but I would say going forward, I'd like to have standards for bike spaces, so no one's taking a car space. We've already planned for a bike space. We've already planned for a charging station. We've already planned for carpool. So they're already providing those things, so that we wouldn't need to take a parking space for that.
A new construction, we should be taking those into account.
Yeah, so I guess that seems appropriate for existing construction or existing buildings, but not so for future buildings.
I think part of what happens is, is over time, the uses may change, particularly with a strong TDM, and you may have excess spaces. So, again, having it subject to approval, I think, gives you the flexibility to work it through.
Thank you.
And this could be helpful for businesses who may want to provide a bike parking and have, they feel they've got extra, they've got room to do it, and the best place is near the front door. So being able to take a car parking space with approval and review of the zoning administrator to make sure it would actually work, and put in like bike racks. Right now, you can't really do that.
My only reason I brought the point was, is that we hadn't provided those things in the first place. You know, hey, want to go take a parking, you know, because what kills me is that we don't have bike parking anywhere. We don't have adequate amount, in my opinion.
Well, can I, since we're in a work session and we can actually speak. So my understanding of this is like, for instance, on Mason Row, they identify us as a tweener market. We're not yet, you know, transit, walk, bike friendly as we want to be. And so they're going to park it at about 90% or thereabouts. But we would hope, as time went on, that we would become more walk, bike, and transit friendly, and that some of those parking places that they're building today, five years from now, could be converted to van pools or charging stations or whatever. Is that, is that what we're trying to, is that what you're trying to tell me?
That's part of the thinking that goes into this. The transportation demand management is so key to this. And with the monitoring over time, you get a feel for how the spaces are being used. If they're going vacant, they might as well be put to another beneficial use.
But we also have a lot of existing parking lots that might benefit if someone wanted to, to be able to put bike parking there, which doesn't exist presently. So the ability to convert thousands of vacant spaces, thousands of existing surface spaces, we'd like the ability to do this in an informed way with an approval process through the zoning administrator.
And the same would be true if a space is substandard due to an encroachment or overhead utilities or something like that. That gets it put to some, you know, reasonable use.
But I don't think there are any, no one's under any compulsion in, if you're a business owner here, to do that conversion. It's just additional cost, even if they do see the benefits. Are you suggesting, then, that we have some system of outreach as well as incentives to do that?
I think at this stage, we would be creating the permission. I think it would take some further exploration to put a program in place where there was actual outreach to employers and property owners. And then the last item that we're talking about is review of parking modifications. As I'm sure you're aware, today, there are occasions when parking requests are actually being heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals as well as by the Planning Commission. What we are proposing here is to eliminate the dual path and have the Planning Commission hear all requests to reduce or modify parking requirements, including the off-site requests that now go to the BZA when there's a hardship aspect to it. We think that it's both beneficial from the standpoint of process, but also ensures a consistent application of your policy and a look at all modes at the same time. And that really sums it up. There's five areas that we'll be looking at, from the parking ratios that we've talked about a number of times, through the review of parking modifications.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, we would hope with a new parking ordinance that would give the ability for the commission to give relief, that there would be standards for these other items as a part of a TDM, required TDM. So you would have bike parking, you'd have charging stations and those items with new construction and a new development. I just want to make sure we weren't confused about the conversion option.
So, did I see bike parking as part of this, or did I miss that? Was it part of the slideshow?
We haven't developed it yet, but it's something we certainly would want to try to have those standards built in. And we do have a TDM study, which gives us guidance about, was done for the city about the need for those kinds of items to help encourage other modes of transportation. We haven't fixed the exact number yet of how many bikes per square feet. And that's something we would work on with Planning Commission and further staff work.
But to be clear, that would be part of the output when it comes to the Planning Commission back to us?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be not only like ratios and maybe proximity to, you know, entrances, things like that, kind of a complete bike packing, bike parking?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any comments, questions?
This is office parking regulation, so how does this apply to a mixed-use building, like the North Gate that has retail, office, and residential?
We're trying to focus this first on office parking. That was-
So solely office?
Office and some, office often has retail as well. So, an office-retail building would come under this regime.
Okay, but no, not, no residential?
We would like to do additional field work to look at mixed use and residential and come back at a later date with that. But we'd like to, the office is where we're particularly interested in having it. As you know, there was a proposal to want to go forward to get a project approved. The ratio was one of the big issues on that. And so, that's one of the reasons for doing this.
So the focus is on the office. That's where we feel like we've got the most work.
Right.
Other comments, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I think this is really good work, and I would support it going to the Planning Commission for further work. A couple points. One of them is that we need to make sure that in developments going forward, that the reduced parking is translated in terms of more commercial activity or less residential. It's often been said that a lot of our mixed-use projects are overwhelmingly residential, because you've got to pay for the parking that has to go underground. So I want to make sure that the city gets the benefit of these changes. That would be point number one. And how we do that, suggestions there in terms of looking at future projects. The second point is, there are an awful lot of parking spaces that if we could coordinate somehow, we'd be better off. I mean, we're talking about building X number of additional parking spaces for the expanded library, and yet within two or three blocks, there are spaces that aren't being used. I mean, that's not a good collective use of resources. So, I know this is focused on parking ratios, but that larger issue continues to frustrate, I think.
I think, for example, in that area, we, I think we identified in the downtown plan that the area where we have fragmentation of ownership and we have a lot of smaller businesses, that a collective approach to parking would make sense. We'd probably have to create some kind of a parking district and be able to give people credit toward parking in a garage. That's another parking item. It's done in various places, and that's kind of outlined in the downtown plan. So it's one of the items we'd need to continue to work on as we, we're trying to do the parking in pieces, so we can get something done that's useful and then go on to the next piece. But I think, for example, the work being done to open up the garage at Kaiser-
Yes, absolutely.
Huge facility, get the best use of it. We may do to invest some of our own money as we continue to work with them.
I view it very high priority, by the way. Yeah, absolutely.
There are some good things, I think, that could be done. It's extremely well-located. It's well-built, and it's in good shape.
I think that the whole discussion about having a parking district or a parking authority, and if you can think of in terms of parking authority, can produce all kinds of benefits. I think the planning director and the city manager would say, maybe even recently, six months ago, that the city is underpart and there's too many spaces going vacant. I certainly understand this intended to address that. But I think a parking authority and its complete fruition would address issues of predatory towing, the cost of parking, credits for parking further away than where you need to be, all kinds of great things could happen with that. I do have one additional comment on number five here. And I would encourage, before you go too much further, to run this by the zoning administrator or council here. It appears that what you're trying to do is move some of the burden for jurisprudence that belongs to the Board of Zoning Appeals, an exercise of interpretation of powers of the, police powers of the city, to go into a planning body. And I don't know that's appropriate or correct. So, I would urge you to look at that first.
Okay, any other comments, or should we see if we have a consensus to send this to the Planning Commission? I tell you honestly, I think it'd be good also to get the EDAs' input on this.
And Susan has made presentations to many groups, including EDA, CACT. So we, and we will want to get their input as well.
Okay. Is there a consensus to go ahead and send this to the Planning Commission by a knot of heads?
Yeah, with the caveat that you take a look at number five before doing that.
With the caveat that we take a look at number five. Is there a consensus? It looks like there is. So let's go ahead. Thank you very much, Ms. Bell. Are you working on the next item as well?
Somewhat.
Okay. Thanks for coming for this one, and let's move on to the next one.
So Jim, you want to lead us off on the next one?
Let me grab my paper here.
By the way, when is that going to come back to us, do we think, about?
I would like to bring it back within the next month or so.
So it's going to roll through the Planning Commission real quick?
Well, it really depends on their schedule, but, you know, I think we can prepare draft language for their consideration within that frame.
Okay, great. That's super.
As you recall, we had a work session sometime back, I think in June, looking at the idea of improving or amending, making some changes to the B zones. And we handed out some information to you, which, if you needed, I've got copies of it, the zoning tables, maps of where the zoning districts are, the acreage, et cetera. What you have before you is a draft ordinance, which tries to put into ordinance form, not final, of course, examples of what some of these changes might be. And so, again, we would hope to have this go back to the Planning Commission to get more input and to have it then brought back to you in more finished form. But a couple of the items that are proposed to be changed here is churches, parish houses, and similar religious facilities, places of worship, which presently are by right in the B1, B3, and M1 zones, would become a special exception with the Planning Commission and the city council being involved in whether or not those made sense. Schools and daycare facilities, and these are private, also would be put into that category. The concern is that sometimes, particularly if you have inexpensive space, you can get commercial space being used extensively by facilities like this. And the intent of our industrial and commercial zones is to produce tax base and provide commercial goods and services. And not to say these can't be appropriate in the city, but we think there should be more discretion. And so those changes are suggested. Also, we're suggesting that in the M1 zones, which presently allow the B3 as a matter of right, that that be changed to B2, which is a more restrictive set of uses. B3 and the M zones constitute more of the commercial-industrial square footage and acreage than the other zones. And so, having the industrial zones not allow as, be as permissive as they presently are, we think would be a step in the right direction. Frankly, most of our industrial zones are not being used for industry, per se. They're being used, there's a lot of car, body shop, automobile uses, those kinds of things. And so you have in front of you some of those suggested changes. Another item that we think makes sense is allowing second-story signs. We're trying to encourage buildings of more than one story to be built. That was one of the Planning Commission's objectives. That second, if you get a second-story building and you have office upstairs or service uses or insurance businesses, they have told us they need signing in order to survive and be found. So, for example, the signing that was put on the building on Anadale Road that burned and was rebuilt, the signing was granted by the BZA as a variance, and that was very crucial, that building being leased up, and it is fully leased, and the signing was an important part of that, the success in doing that. We've also updated the information in the state code language about group homes. And so, that's also been updated in this, in this change. Again, the notion of having some of those uses go to the Planning Commission and city council rather than the BZA, rather than being by right, rather, is another feature of this. We also made a small change about brewing or stealing of liquor, except with an accessory to a restaurant use, the thought being there, you want to encourage things like Mad Fox and others. That's a prohibited use presently in M1, but we think that could, that should be allowed wherever it's part of a restaurant use. So some small tweaks, and you can see how they operate in terms of the ordinance. We've also removed railroads since our railroads have closed down. We now have railroad, old railroad right-of-way or regional railroad parks, but not railroads. So those are some of the features that are built into this. Love to get your comments and further thoughts and direction.
All right, comments? Yeah, go for it.
I would like us to explore what regulations we can put on gun stores. What's the extent of state law? And I suspect that, knowing Virginia, it's quite extensive in terms of preventing us from taking any effective action. But it seems to me, we talk here about regulating book and stationary stores and hardware stores, and then providing special procedures, if you will, for religious institutions. It seems odd that we can't do the same thing for regulating modern firearm stores. So I would like us to research that issue and have a report back to council in connection with this.
Other comments? I have a comment or two. I mean, some of these uses, for example, like B1, it talks about institutions for human care. What is that, anyway? Is that like a nursing home? Or what are we talking about?
I think we'd want to clarify that in the code. We've scratched our head over that, I think, as well.
To me, those things ought to be regulated by special exception, you know, like a, to me, you know, whatever thing, we ought to have some say in where those come in our prime commercial districts. And so, I guess I'd like some exploration as, A, what the heck that means, because I think almost anything is an institution for human care, and B, whether, in fact, that's something we want to allow by right. I mean, a lot of those uses, I got to say, I'm a little concerned. Like clinics, I'm not sure what that means, whether that's, could be a vet, veterinarian place, whether that could be any medical use whatsoever. Like, in other words, it's pretty much any medical use at all. Hospital, anything permitted by right in B1. It seems to me we ought to be more restrictive on those kind of uses. Not saying we don't allow them, but they're regulated, as opposed to just, you know, any hospital wants to move in this big two-acre parcel, we have no say in it.
Well, one of the things that was done, for example, in B1, assisted living, which had a, I believe which had a definition in the ordinance, was moved to conditional use in B1, and that was as part of the consideration of the Kensington. So, you know, certainly happy to note any of these items. We can look into them. Some of them may be well-defined or may need the definitions clarified here as to what they are.
Well, for example, like B1, it doesn't even sound like offices are allowed by right. And maybe I'm missing something. You've got public buildings and facilities, I'm not sure what that is, institutions for human care, clinics, hotels, motels, I guess business, it says business professional offices, which I guess is regular offices, including medical and dental. And then it says offices for medical and dental. I guess it's for laboratories. But it seems like this zoning district is really geared towards almost these kind of specialty things, you know, like, again, a hospital, nursing home. It seems like a lot of the uses here, which are probably what we'd like to regulate, I suspect, as opposed to sort of blanketly allow them as by-right uses. That would be my hunch on this, is that we ought to look at this more closely and say, do we want to allow an institution for human care to come in by right? I don't know what the hell it is.
I would say it's kind of hidden, but you have to go down to like line 139, where the list of retail and service business establishments are listed. It's kind of a, there's a long list there of-
I got it. But that sort of applies to probably like one or two of these items. But the other items, there's a pretty good amount of it. Public building facility, is that a government building? Is that solely what that means?
Could be a government building, could be a public school.
Okay, could it be a private school?
Could be a park, no. The private schools, I think we are moving into conditional use.
So would that mean only city buildings?
Yes, city, public, public buildings and facilities would include city buildings and city schools.
What's included in that? City, state, federal are allowed by right? So a federal office could come in by right, or a state building could come in by right?
Well, if it's an office, it's a permitted use regardless of how it's, what its ownership is.
I got it. But so this is a separate category, right? So presumably, it's greater than just offices, because otherwise it'd be subsumed into the office-
It's also, I mean, it's also, it kind of runs through the other zones as well. I think in B2, it's also permitted as an item.
I'm just wondering what it is, though. How is it different than offices? Like, if it's not different than offices, then you don't need an extra line for it. If it is different, what's the difference?
Well, it could allow schools, for example.
Okay, so false church city schools and what else? Like, federal government building by right or some other facility? I'm just trying to understand what our ordinance, because I think, to me, in reading this, our ordinance seems very antiquated, that we're really geared towards uses that we're not really looking to have in the next 20 years. Maybe we are, but I think we probably would like to have more commercial activity in these business zones. And like, public building may be great for us, but that's not really, doesn't seem like what we're gearing for, you know? That doesn't generate really any tax dollars. It may not generate any tax dollars if it's some kind of-
It could be a post office. I mean, it's, it could be.
Again, but that probably wouldn't generate any money for the city. I mean, I don't know if they pay, if they're exempt from tax or whatever. But, and I'm just sort of trying to get my arms around what all this stuff means. And what I'd like our code to do is reflect what we want it to do, not necessarily what it was in 1958, when, you know, the world was a little bit different. And so, to me, this seems like it still kind of has a feel of 1958. And so-
Well, actually, 1923, line 403, where the following uses located least 200 feet from any R district, except where the use is separated from our district by a railroad?
Yeah.
We're going to get rid of the railroad.
But still, like I said, it just, even now reads institutions for human care. And again, I would like to know clarification on that. Is that a hospital, is it a nursing home? And would we want those? What's that? And do we want that to be a by-right use? Or would we like to regulate and say, you know what, if a hospital wants to move into town, we'd like some say in that, because that's an important, you know, use that may have a lot of spillover concerns for neighbors. Public building and facilities, I guess I'd just like my arms a little bit more around that as well, because it seems like something that's not accretive financially to the city. And clinics, I guess, what kind of clinic? What does that mean?
Where is this taking us? I mean, are you saying we'd like to talk about, like, pretty much any use that'd be proposed, or are there things on this list that we would want to encourage? Or are you saying that this list doesn't include the things that we do want to encourage?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, first off, the first step to me is understanding what these uses mean. And then I guess we, I would recommend we have a discussion, say, if, for example, institutions for human care means nursing homes and hospitals, do we want that to be allowed by right, which means that we have no say in it? They just buy the property, and then they announce to us we're putting a hospital on the acreage property. You know, we're going to, Inova's going to put a hospital, meaning urgent, whatever thing, the whole building's going to be an office, a medical facility-
And we don't want that.
And we don't get any money, let's say, potentially from it, because it's exempt or whatever it might be, and we got no say on it. As long as they meet the parking requirements, et cetera, they can do it by right.
So is it, is it that one in particular that seems to be problematic?
Well, I guess to me, I guess I would, I mean, I haven't thought this through extensively, because I'm really spending time on it for the first time right now. But to me, uses that are not accretive financially, I think, deserve more scrutiny. In other words, uses that are exempt from taxation or don't generate revenue for the city, or vitality, or whatever, I guess I'd want to put more scrutiny on and would want to know whether, you know, we really wanted to have those uses there. I guess anything that, to me, would surprise you or upset you if it just turned up, hey, here's a self-storage facility. We decided to turn this building into self-storage, and that doesn't appear to be on the list. But anything that I think would bother you if it just turned up, to me, ought to be have some discussion about.
Self-storage is a good example of what it is.
I think that it's not on, I don't think it's allowed by right.
It's allowed in the industrial zones.
But not in B1?
Right. Medical, of course, is, you know, medical office is one of our potential markets that, it's actually a fairly strong market in terms of office. If you talk to people at the office market, that's one area that is growing.
I mean, that's the balance I'm trying to strike. I guess that, you know, we're probably not going to be a Fortune 200 headquarters venue, but, you know, we got a lot of active elderly people who need medical care. And we got a lot of super-old people who need more care than even that. And that may be a revenue producer for us. So I'm not saying that we don't want to, like, give it extra scrutiny, because maybe it's not exactly the use that, you know, three or four members of council might want, but-
Well, for example, those two vacant office buildings that were vacant for five years got bought by medical group, private group, moved out of Pentagon City, bought them, renovated them. They're bringing a lot of people here. They've got a list of, you know, thousands of patients, and they want to be here because of their strategic location relative to the hospitals. And people like to come to false church for medical purposes. So, here's one of our strengths.
I'm not objecting to that, but if, let's say they said they want to put a, you know, hospital generates no tax income whatsoever.
I don't think a hospital would be permitted. But we, what we need to do is truth test this with the zoning administrator, because, for example, I think the Kaiser facility is in T1, and it's, I think it's specifically called, it's in one of the T zones, it's specifically called out there. So we can research this more with him in terms of what's actually defined in the ordinance, or may need to add definitions to the ordinance if they don't exist, to clarify what these are. So I think we get your intent, and we can scrub this more. And if you all have additional thoughts about things you'd like to see added or gone, we're happy to, you know, to work on those.
And the approach that you described, I think that has been our test. What are some uses that if they came in and were taking up a block over downtown, and we'd have a problem with? That's the ones we wanted to address in this change. We have taken an approach philosophically that this is kind of an incremental process, that probably a wholesale rewrite and a- that probably a wholesale rewrite and a sort of revolutionary change to the tax is not the approach philosophically that we're taking, but rather sort of more incremental to try to get the low-hanging fruit, definitely. And we might not solve all the problems in the world in this iteration, but we try to get the ones that would be the most troublesome. That's the approach that we're taking, but I think that's a reasonable discussion to the council. Is that the right approach that we should take on this?
It seems like the only thing you're doing is, A, group homes, which are already allowed by federal law. I mean, basically, fair, you know, you can't do anything about it if you wanted to. In other words, the group homes with this eight number, there's already federal law on point on it.
I think they can't be prohibited in a residential district, but I think they can be in a commercial district, if I got that right.
No, it's less than eight.
Oh, sorry, okay.
So, but, and then the churches, but it seems like we really haven't... I think there's a few more things we can do. I understand we don't want to reinvent the world in this iteration, but I do think, since it's coming before us, we ought to consider maybe a little bit more broad changes.
Going a little deeper.
At least, at the minimum, personally, I'd like to understand what the heck this stuff means. Maybe the zoning administrator could tell us. If you guys don't know what the heck it means, you know, I can guarantee you that there's some uncertainty out in the world as to what an institution for human care, what a clinic is. And I don't know if anybody shares my concern or interest in understanding that, but if they do, maybe we could try to put a little more clarity on that.
No, I think that's good.
The biggest change probably is the B3 change, I mean, the M1, the, where B3 goes to B2, in terms of linking that. Because of just the acreage, we have about 101 acres of B3 and M1, and that's by far the, collectively, the greatest amount of this commercial acreage we have. And so, that's a more substantive change that would affect a lot of property.
Well, I was gonna say is that the mayor, in his discussion, has identified probably a few more of the low-hanging fruit that we ought to take on. I do agree that, having not looked at this in any detail before tonight, it does seem as if it's reflexive of a pattern of living that has, time has passed by.
Any more thoughts? All right. So, why don't we move on, unless there's anything else?
So, with the direction to go deeper and take a more comprehensive look at this, is the council comfortable with us engaging with the planning commission, and I think also the EDA on this issue, and developing language and coming back to the council?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to not just see it at the end point. You know, I think it'd be great to have an update as these things mean this or that, because I might have some more input for you if you tell me that a lot of crazy things can be approved by right, or allowed by right.
I think the plan would be to come back in a work session, and then, before you'd go to a first reading, and...
All right, fair enough. So, why don't we move on to that? How about the update on transportation projects? Thank you, Ms. Bell. Mr. Todd, welcome.
I think we have a good and positive discussion tonight on transportation funding. And the council's adopted a capital improvements program. We're not asking for changes to that. What, instead, we're touching base with you on is our strategy for going out and getting state and federal money to help us implement the adopted CIP. And Paul's gonna talk a little bit about those strategies of the applications we'd like to put forward in the coming months that would really cover the next two, possibly three, years of capital projects, totaling about $6 million worth of grants that we would go forward with. And total, in terms of the big numbers, and Paul, I'm sorry to steal a little bit of your thunder on this, but we were assessing the projects that we have either underway today or in the five-year CIP, total about $22.2 million. And of that dollar amount, we have just over $14 million has been, $14.5 million has been funded through local sources, $3.7 million, and outside sources, grants, $10.3 million. And so, we're coming forward with ideas on how we can get an additional, a big chunk of money, with actually a relatively lower local match than even what we're talking about here, to be able to get these projects done. And so, Paul, let me turn it over to you for that update.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Thank you, Mary Tarter, members of council. As Wyatt said, this memo and this discussion is for information and discussion only. There is no action required tonight, and there's no upcoming action scheduled per the slate of grant applications. So, it's an update first on what's going on with transportation and CIP delivery, and then, second, with what grant applications has city staff lined up in order to plug funding gaps and advance other city policies that have been adopted since the CIP was adopted in May. Schedule of transportation projects. This is attachment one in your package. And what it shows is the transportation projects that are ongoing or were programmed through the most recent CIP. It breaks the projects down into commercial area investments, infrastructure investments, and then non-commercial area investments. Commercial area investments are those things that are tied to the small area plans, the planning opportunity areas. They're broken out by program that are specific to those areas. Infrastructure projects may at times pass into those areas, but the catalyst for doing them is state of good repair. And so, those are really a broad reach across the entire city. And then, non-commercial area investments are those things that are outside the POAs, but they're responding to sort of quality-of-life issues within and around the city. So, this, this, the schedule of projects reflects what was adopted in the CIP. It's not a new policy, it's just a response to council saying, we staff, we staff prepared a draft delivery schedule with the draft CIP. The actual CIP has since been adopted. This is the updated schedule that goes along with that. As Mr. Shields said, there is $22.2 million in projects either underway or programmed. $14.5 of that is fully funded. There's a $7.7 million funding gap. That's where the grant application schedule comes in. And $7.7 sounds like a large number, but that's actually how you want the CIP to work, that you want projects that are in your CIP but are unfunded. That's how you go out and get grant funds for these things, that you put them out in years three, four, five of the CIP, and then you use the grant schedules over the next several years to get the, to get funding for those things. So, the grant schedule that's included is attachment two within your package. And there was a methodology that was used to identify these things. So, it was, first, plug any funding gaps that are in years one and two of the CIP. Those are clearly the highest priority projects. Let's make sure that those can move forward on schedule. Second priority, for things that are in the out-years of the CIP, three, four, and five, identify grant sources that could be potentials. And then, third, for things that are not yet in the CIP but are adopted city policies, for example, bike share, which was adopted with the Bike Master Plan, identify grant funding for that, and start seeking grant fund for those things, so that they can be included in future CIPs. Attachment two, it can be a little tricky to walk back and forth between attachment one and attachment two. Attachment one is organized the way the CIP is, with the programs, the commercial investments, the infrastructure investments. Attachment two is organized by calendar month and by grant program. And this is designed for, this will be used as an aid. As grant proposals come forward and applications come forward, they often require council action. And so, staff is expecting to attach this schedule with every requested resolution, and then to simply show as a reference how we're checking the boxes, how we staff are checking the boxes and advancing the application schedules. Efficient use of local funds. This is something Mr. Shields mentioned, that the bulk of the funds that are already programmed for CIP are coming from outside sources. This slate of grant applications carries that forward. It's using an additional $100,000 in local funds to make access of approximately $6 million in outside funds. It's a tremendous match, because the city staff identified a number of grant programs that require no or very little local match, or we took advantage of already programmed local funds that weren't yet being used as a local match for some grant program.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Live, long, prosper. Go get the money.
Any other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Agree totally. Want to thank staff. One of the things that I wanted was a presentation like this, so that folks, first the council and the public, understood that we do have a transportation program, we are reaching out to get the funds. There have been a couple of funding cycles that we haven't been in because of, I guess, the issues regarding when our projects were ready. But I think this is a very good plan going forward, and it will assure that we're gonna try to get all the funds that we rightfully ought to be getting for transportation projects. So, I think it's a good, it's a good, it's a good roadmap for that, if I could use that term.
Any other comments?
So, sometimes it's staff capacity that's given as a reason for, you know, not being able to do... I mean, if we get this money, is it gonna come with enough staff to get the work done? I mean, does this contemplate budget? Does that have budget implications in the years when these big numbers are listed?
Well, Public Works has been part of this planning process, and they're key. They're the people who are actually gonna be out contracting this work and getting this work done. And Mike Collins is here. He was, I think that with any transportation, we just need to acknowledge that transportation projects are hard. There really isn't an easy one. And there are always right-of-way issues. There are always utilities in places we don't want them to be, and we discover them while we're doing the design. And so, they're hard to do, but Public Works has been involved in the planning process.
Yeah, if I could add to that, the only reason we are at this point, where we have this schedule, where we have a plan put together, where we have a large number of projects that are going forward, is because a year, a year and a half ago in the budget, the council added funding for, well, it was grant-funded funding, but we added two full-time positions. One who was a grants coordinator, who has been working extremely closely with Paul to lay out this schedule, and to develop and track the grants, and make sure that we're complying with the grants, as well as a transportation engineer who's doing, who's scheduled to do many of these, particularly the infrastructure projects. So, that's the only reason that we have what we have today. The schedule is laid out here, is very ambitious, but we believe that we can achieve this with our current staffing levels.
Okay, other comments, questions? If not, thank you for a fine update and all your good work, and yours as well, and yours, and yours too. I guess everybody in the room's done some pretty good work. All right, thanks so much. Want to move on to council's schedule and get on out of here. I guess the first thing on council's schedule is next Monday, which happens to be a religious holiday. And so, the question really is how to deal with that. The holiday, does it fall both on Monday and spread to Tuesday as well? And so, the question then is, when might we reschedule? And that's a problem, at least for one of our folks, for Wednesday. So, anyway, I guess I want to just try to see if we can get our arms around that and deal with any other scheduling issues. Thank you, guys, we appreciate it.
So, that is the 14th. And so, I think the question is, is there an ability to move the 14th, or a desire to move the 14th meeting to the 16th?
So, does the holiday end at sundown on the 15th?
Correct.
Or would that be not appropriate to have it after sundown, or whatever, even?
Tonight is seven, tonight was 7:38, so I would imagine it would be...
I mean, it shouldn't revolve around me?
Well, it's not, it's revolving around you and the public. I mean, it's also the public.
Actually, Nader, it doesn't revolve around you, but it is a tradition and a custom and a respect for the diversity we have on council that we've held and respected for the longest amount of time, as I've found in my research. So, I'm fully in support of trying to accommodate your full attendance.
I don't know if I'm, where I'm gonna be that second evening, if I'll be able to make it back in, back in time.
Well, let me ask you this. Is it disrespectful on the second evening to have a meeting, whether you're there or not there? Is it disrespectful to the public, who may be Jewish?
I don't want to speak for the Jewish community.
Well, speak for yourself, then. Would you find it disrespectful if you weren't on council?
I would find it a little disrespectful, yes, to be honest.
Okay, even after sundown?
That's less of an issue.
Well, Phil can't make it on the 16th.
Phil can't make it, okay.
So, I'm trying to find a way to make...
Can we do the 17th?
Yeah, you got... Stuff you're already, you know, there's something.
Yeah, I got stuff on the calendar, too.
The NVRC meets on the 17th. I'm sorry, that's not correct.
Can we do it Sunday?
Campaign.
That doesn't interfere with anybody's religion, does it? All right, so what do you guys want to do?
Sounds like we're just gonna put the meeting off that week.
Put it off till one...
Not hold a meeting. That's what I was thinking back, you know, three hours ago. I mean, it looks like it's a difficult week to meet.
What's on the schedule for that week?
We don't have a very full agenda. We have a routine childcare ordinance change. Jeff Tarbert was planning to come to give you a presentation on doings at the Park Authority, and then some contract awards.
Okay, so, do folks want to just go ahead and cancel that meeting?
Are we, are we not giving loudspeaker assistance in the commercials?
No, we're gonna, I'm striking that out, and we'll let the planning commission do more work on that.
So, then the next week, where does that put us on, the 21st, the 22nd, Yam Kapoor?
Could we do a Tuesday meeting late, a short meeting?
Well, that's what I was just asking Nader about. He seemed to think that was still disrespectful.
I mean, if it's late, I mean, it's, that's, I think, workable. Is there a ceremony, is there a service after that goes sundown, like a... After the... Well, I mean, just keep talking, just keep...
I don't know what's disrespectful or not.
I think, didn't the clerk send out sundown time? And it's, you'd have to move the meeting to like 8:15, based on what she sent, what Celeste sent us. And that seems like kind of a late and odd hour to begin a meeting.
I say skip it. I'm looking at the calendar here.
All right, what does everyone else think?
My only concern is that we've got an issue subsequent weeks as well, correct?
I don't know. I guess the following week is, is it Rosh Hashanah?
Yam Kapoor's 22nd.
Yam Kapoor. That's on the Monday as well?
Pardon my pronunciation, Tuesday.
So, why is that a problem on Tuesday?
Didn't say it was.
So, we can meet on the Monday, right?
As far as I know.
So, we don't have a problem the following Monday?
My concern with canceling it is that the people that were here tonight that wanted to speak tonight are planning to come to speak next week. So, I don't want to... That could be, but I also don't want to shut down the meeting after they left expecting that they were gonna have a chance to speak.
I'd like to have a broader discussion about how to let people have, communicate with us, and how to get information to them, and so...
Those people would not have been here had it not been for misleading mass mailings, so, no.
So, I mean, I'd like to accommodate them. I don't know if we have to accommodate them next week. And I don't want to accommodate them at the expense of other people's religious, exercise of the religion. It didn't sound like there's a whole lot going on that meeting. I mean, the only reason I would want to have it that night is to let people come and talk.
Can we have a regular meeting and work session on the 21st?
Bingo.
You begin, you tell people that we're having a work session, but we're gonna begin with a regular meeting. And so, if you've got something to say, you've got even more time to work up your speech, and then come on the 21st, and we have an hour of that, and then do work for the next stint.
What do people think of that?
The council would have to hold that here, because the planning commission will be upstairs, but we could set it up for a public hearing.
Can the planning commission come down here?
I defer to council to explore that option as well. I don't know what's under general...
I think we just explored it. I mean, if we're gonna have a public hearing, if people are gonna speak, I think it has to be in the chambers.
The only potential problem is the planning commission may actually have an advertised public hearing that night, and so, we'd need to check on that. I know they're working on the west, the west broad area plan, and I believe they actually were planning to take action, have their public hearing on that that night.
And can they not have, will they have speakers as well?
Well, that actually has, that's a formal public hearing that's been advertised, if I'm correct. And so, that would have listed that location upstairs, and...
Yeah, but can't they change venue? I don't think that makes the advertising, if you move rooms within a building, I don't think that makes the advertising defective. Maybe we could talk to Carol about that.
It's probably, I think it could be fixed. I'm just alerting you to the, you know, people who are complaining possibly about that.
All right, well, let's get, let's dispense with this issue pretty quick, because I'm, I think we're all pretty tired of being here. What do people want to do? What did he say? What did he say? Joint?
Regular meeting at 7:30, venue to be worked out by legal eagles, and work session to begin at 8:30.
All right, any other thoughts on that? Any objection?
Sounds good.
Karen, you okay with that?
And then, Ms. Connolly, Tuesday night, we would not have a budget and finance meeting because that is Yam Kapur. Tuesday, the 22nd.
Okay. You okay with that, Dave? All right, Karen, you're the last holdout.
I said okay.
Oh, you said okay? Oh, that's good, all right. So, does that sound okay with you, Mr. Shields? In other words, we'll be able to square that away and get a room and be able to have a true public hearing?
Okay.
Not just some sort of squirrely thing, but I mean, I think people would have an opportunity to speak in a manner that...
Bring cookies.
Okay, any other...
Mr. Shields, oh, I'm sorry, it's not schedule, it's just another matter.
Yeah, whatever, sure.
Okay. The email I sent you about the situation on North Oak?
Yes.
Just wondering if anything happened during the course of the afternoon about the silt fence, which has given way, apparently.
Yes, so we had gotten a complaint about the silt fence at 604 North Oak, and inspection was done today, and a notice was provided to the owner, and a re-inspection will be done on Wednesday.
Okay, so that basically gives them...
Two days for compliance, I'm sorry, one day for compliance.
Right, I mean...
The, the normal practice on ENS is that we do, it is weather-dependent, we will typically look at the forecast, and when, when rain is expected, that's when we go out generally make our rounds. And so, when it's dry, we're not as vigilant on it, when weather is coming, is when we go out for inspections. It's the typical practice.
Okay. The larger question that we won't get into tonight, but which the Government Operations Committee, Ms. Connolly, might be interested to pursue, was the question about how many, how many visits do we make to a defective construction site before we levy a fine? The citizen asked that, and I don't have the answer to that. I don't know if there's some practice, there's perception, as you said, that we're pretty hard on construction companies, but not everyone seems to share that view, so maybe making it clear what our, what our breakpoint is before we levy a fine is something that we could talk about in GovOps.
My one thing is that in our packet, on the 20th of August, there was a notice of public hearing of Metro Bus, so I, in my transportation mode yesterday, it says one of the things they wanna do is eliminate the, on the 3T Piment Hills Falls Church line, they wanna eliminate service between West Falls Church and East Falls Church Station. I think we rely on that pretty heavily to get people through the city. Are there other lines that go through Falls Church? And what does that mean for us if the 3T is not taking people through the city Falls Church? Just ask it.
Mr. Shields and I can follow up with Paul Stoddard, he's been tracking that very closely and advocating for approved routes, and if I recall correctly, this is a low line that doesn't serve us well, and so we've been encouraging them to do the other lines and improve their reliability.
Okay, so like, the 3A and others go through the city Falls Church and do that same route?
Yeah.
So we can get you additional details, because Paul's been tracking it very closely.
You know your question.
I just, the, the, I, the 3A and the 3T do not go through the city in the same way, and the 3T serves a broad swath of, of Broad Street. And the issue with it right now is not, I know their issue is that it has low ridership, it has low ridership because they don't run it often enough.
Yes, so we've been advocating to correct the regular riding.
And I'm happy to say that the Route 7 transit project is moving forward, you'll be briefed on it, and the whole intention is to do BRT through the city. The whole intention is to address exactly that issue. Yep.
But in the meantime, Mr. Stoddard is on this. Okay.
All right, what else we got?
I had two quick things. I've gotten some complaints that it's taken a very long time to get neighborhood traffic calming proposals in the system and moving forward. And then, secondly, there's a desire to have the city recognized in an environmental program, and that needs to happen on Fall Festival Day, and the city staff needs to help make that happen.
Yes, we, apparently, we have... All Falls Church.
Sorry, we, apparently, we have just received the notification that All Falls Church has been designated a wildlife refuge area, and so just individual households. And so, it took a lot of work by a few people to make that happen, and, so two things, they wanna announce that at the Fall Festival or some appropriate, and also have the city pay for like three little signs or something that says that we are recognized. I think the total cost is like 80 bucks for all three signs, it's not much.
Okay. All right.
All righty, anything else? Should we call it a night? Motion to adjourn?
All right.
Somebody?
Having too much fun?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I oppose, since the...